Good evening and welcome to the Long Meadow Select Board meeting. We're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
All right. So, we'll get started. We have a number of things we'll be discussing tonight, and I, we usually start with announcements. So, I don't know if you have any, Stephen?
I actually do, Tom. I have a couple. The first is that we learned today that we were awarded once again the GFOA Government Finance Officers Association Award for Budgeting Best Practices for our FY '18 budget. That's the third consecutive year that we have received at this station. I'm running out of room on my office wall for plaques. In all sincerity, like, it's an honor to be able to meet that accomplishment, but it is really a direct result of a lot of hard work, mostly by people not named me. The Finance Department under Paul's leadership has done yeoman's work on preparing that document every year, and it gets better every year. I think our, they do a pretty detailed score sheet, and each year we improve on our document, and that's really a tremendous accomplishment. So, I want to thank the Paul and the Finance Department for making that happen again. I don't know when it's gonna snow again. I hope, pardon me, hopes not, not again for the rest of the year, but just a reminder to folks that the town has a bylaw requiring sidewalks to be cleared within 24 hours of a snow event, and that there is a fine that could be levied by the Police Department for violators. The sidewalk in front of your house is your responsibility under our bylaws, and we've received a lot of complaints about people not doing that in a timely manner. So, just a reminder for the folks to make sure that they do that. And I think that's it for me.
Can you just add, can you just add the fire hydrants to the comment?
Oh, yeah, and fire, yes, and fire hydrants as well. So, if you have a fire hydrant in your front yard, although I will tell you that, at least in my neighborhood, we all take turns and clear the fire hydrant out because it benefits every house, not just the one it's in front of. So, fire hydrants should be cleared as well. If you have a sidewalk or a fire hydrant and you don't have the ability to do it, you know, certainly, a private contractor or a neighbor should be your first place to start. The police will issue a warning, but if they come back, or if it's somebody who's repeated violations, they will issue a fine, so.
Okay. I do have a couple announcements. One is that we need to add to the executive session one more item. There was a letter, it was a complaint from resident, and we'll need to add that to the agenda for tonight's executive session. The other thing is, I have this, we get this letter from the Mass Municipal Association in, if you keep track of the time, but the MMA is a nonpartisan, nonpolitical association focused on exclusively what works and make our cities and towns stronger. And they talk about the tax bill. Jeffrey Beckwith wrote this article, it says, "Tax, the current tax bill that's being considered this week in Congress and in the Senate, the tax bill would violate 104-year promise against double taxation. The federal income taxes always, always provided for full deductibility, deductibility of state and local taxes. The federal tax do, code has done this to avenge, to, to the, so that the average taxpayers are protected from double taxation. The bills put forward by the President and Congressional leaders ignore this basic promise to taxpayers, and the result would be bad for our states and our communities." As you can imagine, being taxed, you know, $6,000 on your home tax, and then finding that you're being taxed again by the government for that same amount of money wouldn't be too pleasant, but that's where we're headed, and so this, the Mass Municipal Association is really opposing this tax overhaul, and I just thought I'd share that. I don't know if there's any other messages for announcements?
Actually, yeah, now, it's one more, Tom. Sorry about that. I just, maybe we should, just announce that due to the holidays, holidays, both Select Board meetings are scheduled right now for January, gonna be on Tuesday nights.
Both January, Tuesday night, yeah.
January 2nd, and then the 9th, and then the 16th, because the Hall of the Martin Luther King Day is on the 15th. I think I have those dates right.
Okay. Now, ordinarily, we would go to resident comments, but we have a hearing scheduled, a liquor license hearing at 7:05, so it's about that time. If I could get a motion from someone to open the hearing?
If we open up the hearing of liquor license, consideration for Long Meadow Hospitality LLC.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay. So, we'll officially open the liquor license hearing. You wanna step up and, is it Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Tom, you have to vote. There was a motion.
Oh, we have to vote on the motion? I did this last week, too. So, are all those in favor of opening the hearing? Okay, if you could just introduce yourself again.
Certainly, Daniel Kelly of my law office at Mulberry Street in Springfield.
Jeanette Norman.
Jefferson Town Resident.
Okay, good.
This is a application for a new liquor license at the old Hookilaw. We were in front of you a couple of months ago. Some of the members of your board had some very well-placed questions, so we have withdrawn, huddled up, submitted a brand-new application, fairly similar in nature. So, as you can see from the application, this is going to be a restaurant by the name of the Meeting House. Ms. Norman will be the sole owner of the LLC, Long Meadow Hospitality LLC. The manager, Mr. Christopher Katsulis, who was here last time, had a family issue, was unable to be here tonight. The proposed employee roster, the time of the open, is 10 employees, all of whom will be tip-certified. Ms. Norman is also well-tip-certified. The proposed hours of operation are 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., 11 to 1:00. They're gonna do lunches as well as dinners. The seating capacity is of 165, and the occupancy is 195. This, the first floor, last time we were in front of you, there was a suggestion of a patio that has been withdrawn. We're not, this new application does not encompass that, simply the inside. The square footage is a 4272. In addition to Ms. Norman here, I have, I have the architect, and I have, as well as the property manager as well here in support. Yeah, I can tell you that Ms. Norman is no stranger to managerial experience. She was, worked at Golden Sachs a number of years, rise to the level of Vice President, and has been in the restaurant business for six years. They own, this group, and it's not this particular LLC, we own simply this, but the group that she works with owns three other restaurants in the area, West Springfield, Enfield, and Summers. They do a very good business. This is a significant undertaking, it's a significant investment, and they hope to have an ad and have a very, a nice restaurant for your town to patronize. The entertainment that they'll be seeking is nothing more than just simply a TV and some music. There'll be no live entertainment, just a restaurant.
Okay, great. I guess I would just check with Deb next. I mean, we had our, so all the paperwork is in this, because I know there's a couple question marks, or there's some things, like with the fire department?
Yeah, the question marks are what we don't have.
We still don't have the fire department statement, liability insurance, workers' comp?
Health Department.
And the tips?
The ones in yellow are the ABCC requirements.
Okay. So, that, all right.
That checklist.
All right, so our, so as far as, as far as us making a decision on this, do we have enough information?
It's, they don't.
I don't think so.
I couldn't get some of those because there's nothing to inspect, it's a...
Right.
It's an empty shell.
It seems to me that the things that are missing are things that can't really be done right now.
Right.
Yeah, they can't do a fire inspection.
But yet, the ABCC is compelling us to have that before we can issue the license.
Correct.
So, I mean, it's a catch-22, and you're in the middle of it.
It is, I know, it's an unusual situation. My experience is if you do forward the Form 43 to the ABCC, then when the inspector comes out, he'll see that it's not a fictitious place it's going on, and before you can issue your license, certainly you'll need to have all that in your file, but as I'm sure you know, we're unable to obtain any of that before they undertake a pretty significant construction there.
But, Tom, if I could, but, so the question comes up, is this application premature? And I understand there's a desire to find out if you're gonna be able to get a liquor license before you invest and do the construction, and yet, I mean, I believe our hands are tied in terms of committing this license without these issues, you know, because some of them aren't even town-controlled issues, they're state-ABCC-controlled issues.
Right, like the liquor liability and things like that, yeah.
Right, and so the question is, are you yet still premature with this application?
I respect the question, I'm sorry, sir.
No, as you say, for, some of the things, like, health department inspection, having done their build-out and things like that, seems to me that we would be, some of the stuff is just not gonna be done, that we would be issuing the license subject to these? Is that ever done that way?
But, and that's, Bill, that's my point, is the health department's under our control, that's a town, town thing, and we could have contingencies, or issue a license contingent upon successful, or whatever it is. But when it comes to the state and the ABCC, I don't know that we're author, I mean, I've never done it before, and I don't know that we're authorized to issue those contingent licenses. And that's the difference between the health department and some of the, and that's why Debbie, I think, highlighted the ones for us that are ABCC-required, as opposed to, I mean, and by the way, the health department, Deb, our health department, Director of our health department, you know, Zerschworn wrote us a letter indicating what she intended to do, but I don't think that overcomes the, this issue, Tom. I mean, I, that's a real concern.
Yeah, I actually agree with you. They're cookie-cutter, cookie-cutter forms from the, from the state, the ABCC, so they lend themselves to every exact situation. So, really, what we're asking you to do is to vote in favor tonight. Certainly, they can't, they won't be able to pick up their license from you, the issuing authority, until all of those, all those things have been done, but without, I mean, they are in a catch-22, and if you say that they need to have all these things, I guess the answer would be that they'd have to go out and build the entire thing out so that fire could come, health could come, and do all those things, and that's a significant leap of faith on someone, because you could very well deny the application, and in fact, they'd have built that lease, they'd built out a property they don't own in a lease that has a contingency of liquor license, and they'd have to vacate. You know, the forms are the ABCC-generated forms, I'm sure if the town had generated them, they'd be much better drafted, but they're the forms that we left with. They try to encompass every situation, but here we are, we have one that certainly is not picture-perfect, so I do understand, you're absolutely right, but I think that you can go forward tonight, and, but you don't, you are the issuing authority, so you're not gonna hand out that license from the town until all of those things have been done. But I agree with you, the forms are, I mean, the forms are the forms we have to use, unfortunately. I agree with what you're saying.
Yes. Deb, please.
The only problem with these two particular ones that I highlighted, when the Select Board approves a license, these two, you're saying that they're in place. It's a given thing, it's not like a form I'm sending in. When you're signing, you're, you're saying that these are in place, and then I have three days to send the documents in, so nothing's gonna happen in three days.
Right.
So, I don't know how to, how this is gonna be handled.
My experience with new constructions is if they do forward the Form 43N, then obviously you won't have those things, nor could you, until the construction's complete, and some of them, obviously, that the ABCC, when it comes out and looks at the construction, will then make a recommendation to you to issue it pursuant to having the health and the fire and things like that in there. Otherwise, we're kind of gonna be going round and round and have to go out and undertake a $400,000 construction project without any hope of even assurance that they get a license, because you could come back in tonight for any reason, and certainly with well within discretion to do so.
But with all due respect, I mean, we could do whatever we want to, and you could fail one of these inspections, or whatever it is, and still have made the investment and not, and not get it. So, I, you know, from my perspective, my job is to protect me and the town of Long Meadow, and, you know, it's just a matter of, you know, what, whether you take the risk now or you're taking the risk later, because, you know, I don't know, I don't do these inspections, I don't know what's involved in these inspections, and they may be rigorous inspections, and if somebody comes back to us and says they're not quite there, where do we find ourselves?
Can I just interject for a moment, sir? That's a great point, Mr. Gold, but just, so you are aware of it, that we have done several build-outs, remodels, and it is a rigorous process with building inspections, health inspections, we are very familiar with that, and obviously, we have to follow the letter of the law, or otherwise, you don't get a CO, you don't, you're not, you won't be able to open the door. So, it's nothing that's foreign to us, it's a part of the process, it's a part of the business. So, it's something that we are very comfortable in, and as we have the architects behind us, we have very, you know, well-informed folks who know, know that area of expertise.
Yes, Marie.
Stephen, how do other towns handle it when they have new construction? It's rare for Long Meadow, and we have to go back many, many years before we see that.
No, you're not allowed to speak, sir. This is a closed hearing.
I'm not really that familiar with it.
You can't speak.
I could jump in, having done a few new constructions, is, just, if the Form 43 is sent to the town, obviously, you, you as the issuing authority, hold the license and do not hand it out until all of those things are checked off, health. Somebody could fill their health inspection every year, they could fill in a renewal. I mean, there's different things that have to be done, and you, you have that license, and you won't give it out until those are done, and that's typically how it's done. I mean, otherwise, I mean, we're just gonna go round and round, I guess.
I do want to follow up with that. And so, I think what Debbie's saying is, actually, how does she fill out that form, then? She puts "not available" in those areas?
NA, yeah, she sends it down to ABC.
And then you think ABC will still issue the license with it not available?
I know they will, yeah. They'll go, they'll do their DOR checks, or do UA checks, or do their financial checks.
And has this been your experience in other towns? Have you done a build-out in another town?
Yeah.
And, so, if we go ahead and we...
They completed a complete build-out?
We put a motion on to have a contingent that all the requirements must be completed before the physical handing of the license. Is there a problem with that, Debbie?
I'm just gonna have to follow through, send in what I need to, to the ABCC, and then it's up to them if they bounce it back or not, or...
So, it'll be up, like, we'll put NA, not available, on those three areas, pending completed construction, and see what ABC does with it. Is that a possibility?
Haven't done that before.
Yeah, but I think, I agree with Marie, that the form should be correct, you know, what we have is checked off, and what we don't have is, there's a note saying, you know, we do not have yet, you know, the building is still being developed, and, you know, yes.
And I understand, Tom, that the form needs to be correct. I understand that, but what we're signing when we authorize the license is that the form has been completed and all these issues have been addressed. I think what, you know, if there's, if there's a middle ground here, it's get a sense of the board that when this is completed, we agree we will be giving you a license, but I can't vote on a license without a complete, you know, it's not done until the paperwork's done, and until the license is done. I'm very comfortable saying, you know, get the paperwork done, come back in here, and you're gonna get a license, you know, but, but to ask us to complete a license that's, that violates what the ABC, is, ABCC isn't telling us to do, and putting in no NA, NA, it says you must have these forms before you can issue a license. I mean, that's, if you read the documents, that's what it says. You have to have the form. So, I'm suggesting, and I, and I don't wanna catch you, I, I get it, it's a massive investment. I, I wouldn't make the investment either without some kind of guarantee, but there's gotta be something between us sending in a false form, or an incomplete form, or a form that doesn't work, the ABCC, based on what they tell us we need to do as license issuers, and something that tells you, go ahead and make the investment, you've got five votes, or four votes, or whatever, three out of five votes, whatever it takes, that you'll get that license when the, when the time comes, because that's what it's gonna take for you to make the investment. But from my perspective, I can't vote on a, and fill in a form that doesn't meet the requirements that the ABC set me, that I, that I swore an oath to take when I took this office, that I would uphold all the laws of Massachusetts. I'm not upholding that law, and neither would anybody else, because we're sending an incomplete form. I wanna satisfy it, I wanna do it, I understand the situation, but, you know, the others, you know, they just said, how did they do it at Max's Burger? They built it out, they took a shot.
Okay.
Well, that's, that's, you know, Max's Burger took a shot.
Right, and it's expensive.
Max's Burger's been around for years and years and years and years, and God bless them. I'm sure they did take a shot, because they weren't gonna miss.
Right.
Because nobody wanted them in the town to miss.
Well, and I'm not sure anybody wants you to miss either.
Right, I, I respect what you're saying, and you're right. These are forms that are drafted by the state, not by you. If you guys had drafted them, they'd be much better. I, I agree with what you're saying, but I just think that, just, I respectfully think that your interpretation of the forms is not 100% correct, but I agree with what you're saying. I, I do think, and I have had the experience, and I know for a fact that you can vote tonight, you could have those, you had to get a CO, a health, the insurance, the things you cannot possibly get until you're built out, and then, when, before they pick them up, like the tip certifications, they have to drop those off of all employees, they've already hired you. So, I know they can be, do that, I respect your decision, it is unclear, it's not drafted the best way, but I do know that you could vote tonight, should you want to, and the ABCC could vote for, and it is possible, I do know that.
Would you feel more comfortable if we took a vote that said that we will approve this when all the materials are, are in place, rather than just a sense of the body? I mean, I'm trying to get to a middle ground here, but I'll tell you, I'll never vote for, for a license tonight based on an incomplete application. That's me personally. Other people may vote for it, but I'm more than happy to vote to tell you, believe me, you know, when this is done, and we've got everything there, you got my vote. And that's where I was six weeks ago.
Right, and I respect that, but I think, as you know, I mean, that's not binding, yeah. Well, it's not binding either, you know, but, but, not that I wouldn't take you at your word, I definitely do.
As binding as anything else we're gonna do.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Marie?
Well, we could say that we vote to grant the license, delivery of such license will be contingent on the completion of the ABC requirements. Now, I have seen lots of administrative forms go in, and even though things are required to deliver an application, you can still, the bureaucracy, I can see, if they say it happens before, I, I can see us putting in "not available," sending it in, and it gets kicked back, then it's, their counsel has made an error in this case. But what is the public good we're looking for? We are protecting the town by demanding that the ABC process be completed before the delivery of the license, while at the same time, we're helping a resident be able to move forward in a business. I don't think by saying, "No, we're gonna wait for a total completion," we're protecting the residents any more than doing it the other way. So, I recommend that we grant the license, but delivery would be pending the appropriate completion of the ABC process.
So, you would consider that a motion?
Yes.
And would anyone second that motion?
Second.
Pardon?
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded. The motion.
I move to grant the license, but delivery of the license would be pending the completion of the ABC application and requirements.
It was seconded by Bill. Any further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, Debbie passed me over something, you know, it says, it says here, pretty bold letters, it's critical if the local licensing board does not accept an incomplete application, and then they go on to say why.
Thank you.
We don't have, we don't have provisions to read through the law on this one. I wish we did. I know, I know Maria's offered this thing, but it may not be worth the soup it's drawn on, because we apparently cannot submit until we have everything. And we would be falsifying records if we submitted and didn't have everything.
Would be incomplete, I wouldn't, I wouldn't use the word falsify, it would be incomplete because it would be accurate.
If we signed off that it was complete, we'd be falsifying records.
I think you just sign the bottom, and the bottom lists what's there and not.
Well, what would be wrong with calling the ABC tomorrow and checking with them? This, this doesn't have to happen at this instant. It must happen all the time, and... Well, we don't know that, though, Bill. We don't know that. Oh, you mean calling the ABC? Well, no, that, where, where the restaurant is not gonna spend a half a million dollars building out their space, and now, not, when they have to have a license to operate. But, but you would think that they would have some guidance here, but they don't seem to have any. It's just, it's not a good process.
Could I see them?
Sure. That's from the fire marshal, yeah.
Right. And again, some of the things that are on this, that are missing, you know, of course, the fire department inspection can't be held until there's a building completed.
But that's an in-house one, though, Tom.
Yeah.
We can, we can waiver the daylights out of it.
And Board of Health, you know, it's looking, mostly she's concerned about the grease trap.
Right.
Liability insurance, I don't think anyone goes into business without that. Workman's comp, I don't believe you can do that.
All in terms...
I don't do business on workman's comp. Every person we've granted a license to has had tips, serve safe, serve safe folks come forward, and then there's, you know, and I think that's the main things we have concern about, and so, if, the biggest issues are liability insurance, workman's comp, and the tips. I mean, I found it hard to believe that they would try to get by without those.
Well, that's not, that's not the concern of this board. We can waive all that. We can't waive the requirements of the state.
Right, well, the state can then say, "We're not gonna..."
Yeah, but why, why would we even consider putting in an incomplete application? How do, how do we meet the responsibilities of our community in, in doing such a thing? I mean, we're sitting right here and acknowledging...
This restaurant, this restaurant, just, can I just say something, just for the record here? The restaurant cannot, and simply cannot, open unless everything is in place in terms of the building inspection, the health code. You can't serve a cookie there unless everything is 100% on target.
Certificate of occupancy, I mean, there's other...
There's a million, you have to jump through many, many, many hoops before you can open the door and serve the public. A glass of water.
Any, any other discussion on this? Yes, Marie?
Well, what Richard has shown me is from the fire department, and it's specifically requiring the fire department inspect premises before you grant the license.
But that's a state level.
It's state level for public fire services. So, it's not from the ABC saying we must have it completed. This is from the fire department emphasizing how important it is that there are fire inspections of any place that there is a liquor license. And I think it's very clear that this building will have to be inspected by the fire department before occupancy would be allowed in the license. So, I think that it emphasizes the absolute importance that the Fire Safety Act of 2004 is followed.
That was just, the state also says they need a complete app.
So, I, I still think that we have to find some way that we follow the bureaucratic requirements while at the same time let businesses move forward. So, I'm going to leave my motion.
Leave whatever you choose. I didn't ask you to withdraw your motion.
No, we, we do have, would it be any help to ask our town council, who happens to be here with us? I mean, could we ask you?
I can't give you chapter and verse on this.
No.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Just a point, we're, we're still in a hearing, so we can have them speak, or if there's anybody who's speaking for or against the license from the public can also speak as part of this hearing.
Which means the gentleman in the back?
If he's recognized, he can come up and speak.
Okay, so, yes, it's a public hearing, anyone else has a, wanna make a statement for or against this? You may have to move over so you can speak in the microphone, if you...
Just so you get recorded here.
Yeah, have a seat, just to start with your name.
It doesn't amplify, it's just for the TV.
Have a seat, have a seat. Please tell us your, your name and your address.
My name, Lou Masachi, Jeanette's husband.
Okay.
So, I've been, we've been doing this quite a while now, in my career, a very long time, I've had probably like 10, 10 restaurants in my, since I was 28. And the process, I know the process, and how the process works. We just, we went through this in Enfield five years ago, we went through this in Summers also, to get the, to get the license. So, here's, here's the process, is that you go to the town, you tell the town what they're doing, the town grants you a license, doesn't matter, doesn't mean we're gonna get the license, but they grant it, so you guys can go ahead, proceed with it, and then the state becomes involved. And then when the state becomes involved, when, once we get granted from the town that we're allowed the license, which is very true to Enfield, Summers, Buzzes Bay, Wareham, Massachusetts, is that we can't do anything until the town says we can do something, and then we pass it on to the state, and the state takes 35 to 45 days to grant us the license. And their procedure is, they come out, they have a rep come out, inspect the building, make sure that the entryway's just the same and where it's supposed to be, and then they'll, they'll look for the workers' comp, the liability, all that stuff's gonna be in the paperwork before they grant it, because the last step of getting a license is the, is the state. You guys could say, "Yes, yes, yes," and the state could still disapprove us, because they do the background check and all that. So, like in West Springfield, we've, we've gone through that in Massachusetts, they know who we are, they do the quarry check and all that, so it's becoming, the state's becoming So, it's become, the state's become, in a sense, they're the final, they're the final tap to open any restaurant, and then you go through the fire, and then the health department comes in, you get, and before you do anything, open anything, which you folks all know, the health department's gonna give you a clean bill of health, gonna issue a license, the fire department comes in and inspects, the, who else we got, Kevin?
Kevin to speak, Kevin Rontsche, Architecture, Yale. So, the, the space right now is an empty shell, we'll complete a whole, complete round of construction, so we'll have building permits in line for the primary building, all the key subtrades such as electrical and plumbing and fire, all of those will be reviewed with the related and appropriate departments. They'll inspect periodically during the rough and finished stages, and all of those inspections are normal to the construction process. It will ultimately result in an occupancy permit, in which case, as Lou says, one of the last inspections that comes through is Board of Health comes through, it'll be a full, you know, a fully commercial kitchen with all the requirements for everything from vented hoods to grease straps to hand wash sanitization. So, those things will be a function of the renovation, and it's pretty standard fare in terms of building out a restaurant.
So, we took, absolutely, Kevin, we took the old families in Enfield, we did, you know, we got it, so it was very similar to this, but Enfield said, yes, you can have a license, what are you guys gonna do, here's what we're gonna do, fine. And then we passed it along to the state of Connecticut, and then they, you know, they do their thing, same with Massachusetts, and then that's the final draw, and then in order for us, and for you guys as a town, to actually us get, open the door, you have to do all your town inspections, which is very thorough and everything, but we have to know that the town's gonna grant us this liquor license before we can do anything, 'cause if you don't grant it, it's really all waste of time, all a waste of the town's time and money and our time, because we're taking a risk at something we don't know we're gonna get, you know, so that's, that's where, on, on, like, as I keep repeating myself, the state's always the last one to grant it. If the state doesn't have workers' comp, like, they're not, they're not gonna give us it. The state doesn't have liability on that application, they're not gonna give it to us. We're just, most towns go through the process, you ask the town, the town says, yes, we want your business, we want you to be successful, we'll grant you the license, good luck to you as far as, 'cause they, 'cause, which you guys know, there's a whole procedure to opening anything and getting a C O. So, the stage one is right here, we, we put it off, put it off, and, and we've moved process, you know, as far as me and my wife, as far as hiring, Kevin is the architect, he's got some plans going, we've dealt with a contractor, so those are all the steps we're taking, still not knowing where we stand.
Okay.
But we do know where we stand with A B C, 'cause we already done A B C, they know who we are, we have the license, so they get where we're coming from as far as granting it. That's, that was not our concern. So, our concern was to get the process going.
All right. And Marie, you have another quick question?
Yeah, I have a concern. So, if we go ahead and we follow through on my motion, it's voted, and you send it in, Debbie, you're saying that you've never done this before, so there's a chance that they'll kick back and reject it. So, that's what Debbie's saying, and Mark, you're saying we should just say that we intend to grant, but your, your belief is they will accept a partial application because they've done build outs before?
Yes, and pardon myself, they have the final say, so they have, once you guys say it's okay for us to have a license in this town, they're the ones who submit the license. So, it's all, it's all state regulated. So, you're just, you're just being the friendly neighbor saying, okay, we want, we want this, this is fine for this gentleman to have this license, or my wife, Jeanette, have this license. So, now, the A B C does their, their work, they send somebody out to make sure what we're saying is on the application, and you guys sort of, besides all the due diligence with the health and fire and all that, you guys sort of continue doing business as you're doing, but you already granted or something, and then the state is the final, is the final policeman who says, you can, we'll get this, Lou, it's fine, you have everything in place. They won't kick it back to you.
Okay. Yes, Marie?
Mr. Masachi, I, you've done it before, I haven't done it before. So, why is the state so insistent upon telling us, you can't, don't submit an incomplete application?
The state isn't, the application might, those are...
No, that, that's, in black and white, it says, you must complete a, complete app, submit a complete application. Put yourself in our shoes, we're voting to say, we're submitting a complete application, we know we're not.
But I can't submit a complete application unless I get the vote from the town, 'cause I'm not sure, what do we, what do we not submit it, sir?
These, A B C, the certificate of inspection, liability liquor license, or the insurance.
Those are things I just don't have, I wouldn't have right now, why would I have them? Because we're not even at that stage yet. So, that's where that, some of the verdict is wrong.
Hence my phrase, catch 22.
That's where the verdict is wrong, so I mean, and all the other, I'm just saying, with all my experience, I've never had a situation where someone questioned that, because the town, the, like I said before, the state, before they give us the license, will check off and make sure they're done, fine, they won't kick it back to you folks.
Okay.
'Cause they only know, they only know the circumstance.
So, the state's not gonna issue you a license either?
No, thank you. I think that, you know, we've gone through this several times, several rounds now. Is there anyone else here who would have any comments, be the for or against this? Okay?
Yeah, I have one comment to make, which I failed to understand. We had, you, you guys were here a month ago, and we gave you back...
We were here on September 18th.
We gave you back the application, there was a lot of open spaces, and you're walking back in again with open spaces. And I, I don't understand, I mean, why couldn't somebody on your side, if it was that important to get this board put at ease, we're telling you, we can't accept this with open spaces, and why wouldn't you come in with some kind of notification from the liquor control board and says, hey, it's okay to submit this thing with open spaces? Well, we, as far as we're concerned, we can't do that.
I respectfully disagree with you, having done this before, I know that the Form 43...
What are you disagreeing with?
I disagree that, that you cannot submit it without...
I'm not saying that, why didn't you come in and have reassurances on these items?
Have reassurances?
We asked, we asked you at the last meeting, get, get the names all straight, get this straight, get all the forms filled out.
Which we did.
You come in with two open spots on it, and you're asking us to trust you.
No, I'm not, sir, I'm asking you to...
We can't.
No, 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 not at all. The, what I'm asking you to do is to vote yes or no on it, and what I'm asking you to do is take a look at, it does not say that you cannot submit. I understand what you're saying, they're poorly drafted forms. However, the next step, the A B C C has to come out and investigate it, the A B C C will call us, they can't have a liquor, no one will write a policy for a position, for a, for a restaurant that doesn't exist. You can't get a fire inspection for a building that is not built out.
Why don't we just throw the form out, we don't need it, apparently?
Well, I mean, I think that's something we take up to the A B C C.
We'll just wait until everything's built, and then we'll, I mean, come on, guys, we, it's not the first, it's not the first one.
Well, if everything's built, sir, disrespect for you, if everything's built, and we spend, you know, half a million dollars or a million dollars, and then you come in and say, you know what, I, I don't think this is a good idea, guys. I, I don't know how, I mean, it's just like, I, I mean, we're doing a hotel project in downtown Springfield. They helped, granted myself and my wife a franchisee agreement to build this hotel, a Hilton Home with Two. So, in order, and, and they, they went through the, it took quite a while to get that process, but we got the franchisees ticket, and now we can move forward with, with building a hotel, but before we get that, we have to take the next step as far as, we have to, you know, get an architect, get plans approved from the city and all this other stuff, and we, you go, it's, it's a risk like everything, but there's this procedures, and with me and Dan doing this quite a while, if the town doesn't grant us anything, 'cause once, if, if you say, okay, we'll give you, once the, the fire department inspects, say, two days before we're gonna open, you grant us the license, those two days, then A B C C doesn't grant it for another 45, 60 days, because you haven't granted it to us yet. So, that, I mean, that's, I've, I've been doing this a long time, same with Dan, that's how the process works.
Okay, well, thank you. Marie?
When I complete forms, and I don't have information available because of certain reasons, I often say, see addendum, and there's a letter saying these, explaining that that will come later. So, my recommendation is, and it's up to you, to just put a letter, an addendum in the back saying why you do not, are not able to do a fire inspection at this point in time.
Absolutely.
And why you're not able to get the insurance, because you're still waiting to do the build out.
Right, and some of those forms, for example, the forms doesn't even have, doesn't even ask you what hours you're gonna be open. I mean, the forms are very, are lacking, so, I mean, I come here and I say, well, we're gonna open from 11 to 1. I mean, the forms don't even ask you that, I mean, we're a pretty major suggestion in the form, so, I agree with that.
It might have been something that we can also mention to the governor, that there, he's talking about trying to update forms and this Modernization Act, and this might be a recommendation that we fix this, so there doesn't seem to be a contradiction on the face of the form in the future.
All right, so, I believe we had quite a bit of discussion on this, and we could move to vote?
We have to close the hearing.
Okay, I guess we should, all those in favor of closing the hearing? Do we have a motion to close the hearing, I guess? Richard, you want a motion to close the hearing?
Yeah, yeah, motion to close the hearing.
Second, second, who is in favor of closing the hearing? Okay. And then a vote on the motion? All those in favor of the motion? Opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right, gentlemen, we'll...
Thank you.
...fire you to follow through on the rest of this, and I wish we could have tasted the food before we made the final decision.
For, for the benefit of those people listening, I will call this agency tomorrow and find out what we should have done, which I think we should have done to start with, but either here nor there.
So, I was Googling, trying to find, like, you know, can you issue a liquor license before construction? And there's nothing clear, but what is clear, and we do know this, the A B C C, it's a two-step process, and the A B C, the A B C C is the final decider on who gets liquor license, not the town.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just interested if we can submit an incomplete form.
Yeah.
And we should probably send that off to the governor next term this year.
With my Christmas card that I'm gonna send.
Yeah, well, I can call him tomorrow, too, I mean, I just, as far as we know, we can't do it, and we just wanna make sure we make the right call, but you got your votes, so that shouldn't be of any concern.
Thank you.
That's as long as it was a legal vote.
Thank you, Marie.
The whole board.
Okay, so...
Oh, no, thank you, Marie.
We do have, yeah, we have some folks here for appointments, and I think that probably should be our, our next, let me just, we have two folks, Dr. Elfman is applying for the position with the Park and Recreation Commission.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And I respectfully request that your comments, that long and special first, be made, because I'd like to speak about your appointment.
Is, is Dr. Elfman here?
Yes.
Okay, all right, good. Well, I, I don't know, that's not a usual standard, I've...
No, you can have, you can have the, you can open it up and have your comments.
Yeah, when we do...
Visitor comments.
We could do resident comments.
Yeah.
It might be better to fit you into there, but I think once we start resident comments, there's gonna be a few folks, so maybe if we could just have them introduce themselves, and then you can make a statement after that. So, could you join, sit at the table here, you're, move right up front here, Richard, and then, you can just introduce yourself, tell us your interest, or your, your address and your interest in...
Sure, I'm Richard Elfman, 109 Tennyson Drive in Long Meadow. Been a resident here for a good 28 years or so, and interested in helping out on the park board.
Okay, and, and I see you were involved with the Lynn Tennis Courts, what was your involvement with that?
Well, I assisted Jim Russell in finding out what other towns had done, so that we could learn from their experience, so we didn't have to repeat mistakes that they made, and we could take advantage of what they did, so I checked in with the town of East Long Meadow, who had recently done tennis courts before us, and Western New England, and found out, you know, the people that were involved in the process and assisted in making sure that the town went in the right direction.
And, and just curious, how many years were you? 'Cause I know it was a long process, but...
Certainly, the, the last couple of years, I've been involved, I've been involved with tennis, as some of the people here know, for quite a, quite a number of years, and I had a particular interest in, in tennis. My daughter played in the high school tennis team in Long Meadow, and my son played in Long Meadow many years before that, so, you know, that was my particular interest, but as a result of that, that turned into a springboard for me to, to talk to Mr. Russell, and we developed a good relationship.
Thank you. Any other folks on the board have any questions?
Those were great days back when I could see and walk.
Yeah, Bill played as a partner of mine at one point.
I've known Rick for years, you know, he's a good guy, I would obviously support this.
Being on there, okay, all right. Any other questions, or, okay, so we will let you know in the new year, we'll make the decision, all right? Thank you, you can have a seat, and then he'll speak later, yeah.
Thank you.
We're done?
Thank you for volunteering.
Yeah, we, we can't vote till the next meeting.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
I was expecting a grilling.
Yeah, you got your grilling.
And we also have another appointment, candidate Sherri Knight, if you could please sit up here, and Sherri is applying for Community Preservation Committee, and if you could just tell us, give us your name and your address.
Hi, Sherri Knight, 14 Falmouth Road. I've actually been on the commission for, committee for two years. I was a committee member appointed by the Conservation Commission. I recently stepped down from the Conservation Commission, so I can no longer be a Conservation Commission member, but there are at-large positions, and there is actually two open, but I'm applying for one of them right now.
Okay.
So, I've been on the committee, I'm familiar with what's going on, I've been going to the meetings this year, just to stay up, even though my position has been, I stepped off the Conservation Commission in June, my term was up.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you for not being overwhelmed by wanting to re-up it.
Oh, no.
The Community Preservation, it's a very important committee, thank you.
It's a great committee, and the committee works well together, it's nicely run.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's, that's good, I have no questions, so, no other questions? So, we will let you know in January?
Thank you.
The new year, yeah, thank you for coming in, volunteering.
If I could be so bold, if we could have an answer sooner, because, as soon as possible, because we've, vote on the, the public hearing is January 20th, I just saw that.
Yeah, I think they probably will vote at their next meeting, which is the 40th.
Yes, January 3rd.
January 2nd.
Okay, good.
Then I'll be all set to vote.
Good.
Thank you, thank you so much.
We hope the communities don't do too much between now and January 1st.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I guess the next thing we should do is to have resident comments, and I know, James, you've already kinda asked if you could start that process, so, we'll want you to do that.
Thirteen years ago, a roly-poly gentleman and his wife moved to Long Meadow from Brooklyn, New York, and became a next-door neighbor. This man is James Jones. We talk about volunteerism. Here is a man who did not know the word no. Shortly after Jim arrived in town and I got to meet him, I found a phenomenal individual who wanted to do everything to help the town that he just moved to. He volunteered for Wheels on Wheels with St. Mary's Church. He became a crossing guard, he worked during the elections, did everything under the sun that one could do. And then five years ago, he became a fellow park commissioner. It was an absolute pleasure to serve with this man. This past Monday night, he completed his tenure on the board, and I know for one, I will miss the hell out of him. His dedication to the town of Long Meadow knows no limitations. We saluted him with a cake and some soda, as we said goodbye to him, but I would like the town to go on record to saluting this volunteer, because he deserves it. Thank you.
Okay.
And I just have one last question, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to direct as representative of the park board to our town manager, can you give me an update of what the Salt Howard situation is at the tennis courts?
But I don't think that would be appropriate at this point, he may say something during the, the town manager comments, but you can't, you can't ask questions of the board at this point.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, not even you. Thank you, though. Alright, so we, we will now move to resident comments, and I know we have a few folks here, and some folks in the room have spoken before, and so I would ask if you have comments that they're, it's new information for us to hear, and that they're not too extended.
Good evening, I'm Bill Tognary, 870 Long Meadow Street. I understand that you, the board, are aware that there has been a records request of all town correspondents about the young home, including between the town manager, Mr. Crane, and the developers. As a taxpayer, it was extremely troubling to see a town employee reaching out to the developers to formalize a strategy for broad community support, which he labeled as essential for his zone change. Mr. Crane uses the word "we" as if the town and the developer are one entity. I am here tonight to ask this board to get all emails and texts from the town manager about the young property over the past year, directly from the town's IT department. This would assure that they are complete and unedited. These communications should be made available to all town residents, so they can see the town manager's time and effort counseling the developers on what to say, what to do, and how the process will work. It's important that taxpayers get a full picture about what the town manager, and therefore ultimately the town, did to assist these developers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other resident comments?
Yeah, hi.
Yes, I just say your name and your address, please?
Good evening, my name is Tim Summers, and I live at 679 Long Meadow Street, and I've lived on the Green for about sixteen years, and I wanted to comment, I was made aware of a correspondence and opinion letter that was requested by the town, and was provided by the town council, and I read it, and I was a little bit disturbed frankly, by a particular comment, which I would like to read, this relates to the same property, the property at 739 Long Meadow Street, and I quote...
Point of order. We're in a, I know the gentleman are under visitor comments, but the statements they're making are indicting, and I don't know if that's the format for that. Mike, can you help us on this? I mean, these, the residents are making accusations against our town manager, which I think should be confidential information, and I don't know if the public format of this is appropriate.
My comment is not indictment.
Okay, well, the last, the last gentleman's comments were, and, and I just don't know where we, I'm not sure where we sat on that, Mike. Well, I understand, but there, but there was insinuations that there was fault, and that we should investigate fault, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so there's a, there's an implied indication in front of the press here that something has taken place that's against the law, or at least shouldn't have taken place, and I'm not sure that visitor comments is the area for that, I may be wrong, I'm just saying, I, I wanna make sure that we're on sacred ground here, if we allow this to go on. Do you have any feelings on it, Mike?
I think you should always err on the side of letting residents address the executive government.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, because I, I mean, recently we've had...
Okay, go ahead.
People complaining about our...
Go ahead, go ahead.
My comment is an indictment, but what I just heard was a request for information, disclosure of information, not an indictment. But going back, let me restart quickly, I reviewed a letter between, that was requested by the town, the letter was from the town council's office, it relates to the property at 734, what I found disturbing, which I'd like to quote the section, quote, and again, this refers to the property, "would constitute an initial step towards broader zone changes for creation of an overlay district in the area in conformity with the master plan," end of quote. Now, to the extent that the town council feels that rezoning one property is the first step in a process, is concerning, it leads me to, to wonder if there are other properties, other homeowners, who are lining up to be next in line for the rezoning, and if that's the case, then the town and, and, well, the Green and the town would suffer immeasurably, because it would change, it would become a commercial district, and it would, it would change, so, what I am requesting, and this is not an indictment, it's a, it's a request for information, is, to the extent that there has been dialogue between the town and others seeking to follow in suit, if you will, for rezoning requests, if those conversations have been going on, that they be disclosed, you know, conversations, say, in the last twenty-four months. And the second point was, you know, there's reference to the town plan, which I understand was presented in, oh, 2004, and that included this overlay zone, or overlay district, I'm not sure from my research, when it was approved, and what form it was approved, so I would ask also, that at the appropriate time after some research, someone disclose, along with what communication has occurred, when the town, when this district, this concept of an overlay district was approved, and in what form. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much.
This is my first time in the town, being a little, little nervous. My name's Paul Colento, and I reside at 40 Wilken Drive, a little outside the area that we're talking about, here in the great town of Long Meadow, Massachusetts, and I, from my point of view, I, I support the changes to the Burry Young Mansion, you know, let me give you my perspective. I'm relatively new to Long Meadow, I moved here with my family from San Francisco in 2009, grew up in Western Mass, came back, Long Meadow is where we wanted to, wanna live, but we've been here only since 2009, we don't have the legacy that some of the people that are speaking here have, and, and certainly I respect that, and one thing my wife, my son and I have, like, saw since we've been here, is this, we've been struck by this sense of community, tradition, and yes, even some tremendous modernization that's gone on since we've been here, I mean, there's been the, the high school, the shops expansion, roadwork, sewer projects, and the DPW was the big project, that's a lot to go on, it's all been debated and approved at town meeting, and now, the Burry Young Group is proposing executing a vision for the house, which, from what I understand, is consistent with the recommendations of the town plan, as well as support from the Long Meadow Historical Commission, and in my point of view, they're doing the right thing, because they live here, they see the blighted state of that building, and the effect that it has on the Green, and over the past six months, they've offered us their hospitality to view the building, that's in really sorry shape, and it's embarrassingly deteriorating for the past seven years. Everyone that lives in town drives by that, and thinks and talks about that haunted house on Long Meadow Street, and they've submitted their plans for restoration, they've allowed all of us to give them their input, they've had open houses, and they've, they've really done more than typically any other project I've ever seen in other areas, of course, that's not Long Meadow, but more importantly, these are residents that live here, and they're putting skin in the game, and, and I think that that's something that we need to respect. And from what I've learned from reading the notices, the articles in the paper, speaking with sponsoring individuals, and attending planning board meeting a few weeks back, they've met with all the relevant boards and oversight groups, and they've completed or exceeded what's been asked of them, and now from what I understand, they've obtained resident signatures required to bring the matter to a vote, and I think that they should be provided that opportunity in accordance with the town bylaws and the procedures. You know, from what I just heard today, I gotta say, the best thing about living in this town is diversity of opinion, and based on the incredible feedback from all the perspectives, pros and cons that I've heard, it's clear that our great town of Long Meadow isn't just a place, it's an idea, it's a state of mind, and to my, in my opinion, this proposal doesn't just restore a blighted property, it's going to enhance the Green, the town, our community, and I'm hoping that you support a voted town meeting as soon as possible, because in my opinion, the ultimate approval of this project at town meeting is going to encourage good or bad residents, like Dr. Lamb, Mr. Orzalak, and maybe people like me down the line, to invest in our town, because if we don't invest in our own town, people from the outside are gonna come in and do it, and we're not gonna like what happens. I personally think this project is a model for public and private town improvement, because by listening to all sides, thoughtfully following the guidelines, which are mutually agreed upon, and ultimately executing, it's gonna work out great. I think we need to save this house, and it starts with a voted town meeting, thank you very much.
Okay, yeah, thank you for your comments, and of course, folks, you know, there is going to be a planning board meeting where, that is gonna be the, the most appropriate place for these kinds of comments, because the planning board will actually take a vote on this, and so, you know, you may wanna save your speech and read it again there.
Hi, my name's Jeff Went, I live at 930 Long Meadow Street, and guests are all saying, I've lived there for twenty-five years, or twenty years. So, my question was also about the town manager's work with the owner of the private property, that was touched upon already, what I'm asking is the same thing I asked when I was here last month, just to think about what's going on, not making any accusations, but when information becomes available, that reveals details of people going back a year and a half, or eight months, and working directly with other people, it's not an accusation, it's actually a fact, and you should consider the effect that might have on something as important as this coming to our town, and so my question, or my statement, is I'd like the, the board to consider how they're gonna level the playing field, how they're gonna consider all the things that have come to pass when they're thinking about how this goes forward, how are you gonna fix the fact that one section, one developer gets to work exclusively with the town manager to get something pushed through? The other thing I, I was gonna mention was about the opinion about the, whether this is spot zoning or not, which was what was referred to before, again, they keep bringing up this overlay zone, what is this overlay zone, is it something official? It's brought out by the people from the Historic Commission as evidence that it's what's meant to be, does that mean that from the beginning of the highway to the south end of town, that there are thirty-seven properties that potentially are gonna be commercially developed? Is this gonna affect the entire town? Is this gonna expand to any major artery, Converse Street, Bliss, Williams? I mean, there's tons of places where there are commercial, civic, or educational properties, where there are large properties abutting them, that could be turned, so when I drive down from the highway to my house, the first half of town that I go through potentially could be commercial, is that what we want? And that's my concern, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
I'll be brief, I promise.
Thank you.
Obviously, this has become kind of a controversial...
To start with your head.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ed Carroll, 788 Long Meadow Street.
Thank you.
I actually agree with, with some of the comments before, but I, I also think that, regardless of what side of the debate you're on, with, with respect to 734 Long Meadow Street, I think it needs to be fair and balanced, I think that there needs to be factual information that's being sent out to the citizens of the town. Mr. Gold spoke earlier about the fact that this board can't even vote on a restaurant getting a license unless they have all the plans in place. We don't know what these plans are, no one in the town knows what they are, they, they've even changed because the tenants that are there, were going to be there, are not there anymore, and so it opens up a situation where we really don't know what could happen down the road, if it's rezoned, to the point of rezoning it, it doesn't save the building, it does nothing to preserve the young building, you rezone the land, so that the developers can actually do whatever they want, if they go down the road and find out that they can't get anybody to rent it, and that's an open issue. The Freedom of Information Act, so, to just talk about what Mr. Tognary mentioned, it's important for both sides of the issue to, to come out and, and give their opinions. While I disagree with the rezoning, we need to have all the facts laid out to everybody and make it full disclosure, and it appears, through that Freedom of Information Act, that's not being done for the citizens of the town, and it's concerning, and so that's why I wanted to put that in front of the board tonight, and that's, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I don't know if, Marjorie, yes?
Richard Elias, 608 Frank Smith Road. I've been listening to people from both sides of the issue about the young building. I have to agree with the people that have their homes near there, they put a lot of money into their property, and they take pride in it, and I also have to look at the people that wanna put in, I believe two of the people are town residents, one is not. That building, at one time, was beautiful, would've been great if they could turn it into a museum, but it deteriorated, something has to be done about it. There are not, well, the young people had a factory, they started here, they had a family that went for years and years and years, and they needed a big home, I don't think people these days are looking for homes like that, people that are running companies are going from one company to another after so many years, and not looking that much to the future. And the big question is, can we save that house, at least the facade? I've been told by the people that wanna do it, they're gonna leave as much as they can in the old traditional factory, I haven't seen it, but I think they have a right to save what they want, and everybody else, same thing. I understand where people are saying there's, shouldn't have a zoning change, it might be something to say that maybe instead of a zoning change, it's a zoning variance, just for that property on that side, the people, two of the people are medical doctors that I know of, and they like to have their offices closer to where they live in town, I think that's kinda nice, but it's something that the whole town are gonna have to stay over. Now, for Mr. Crane, I haven't agreed with him on a lot of stuff, and he hasn't agreed with me on a lot of stuff, but his honesty is something that I've never questioned. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Richard.
Good evening, I'm Margaret Cohn, I live at 66 Woodland Road, I'm here on behalf of the Long Meadow Historical Commission, which I am the chair, I'd like to present to the board our updated areas of historical significance in Long Meadow, which is compiled by the Historical Commission. This is a list of structures of historical interest in our town, which are subject to regulations such as the demolition delay bylaw, the documents will be put on the town website with links to various departments. This document also fulfills part of our mission to identify, preserve, and educate the town about its unique heritage. So, here we go. And, unfortunately, so I can send some more to your attention. Just to be clear, also, as I mentioned, these are structures that would be, that would be affected by the demolition delay bylaw, and these are, also, there's a list of structures and houses that we wanted to send a letter to, telling the owners of these homes that they are affected by the demolition delay bylaw, and we have asked you several times to give us some assistance in sending out this letter, since the commission has no money and no real power to send out a letter, we were asking the select board to advise us on how to accomplish this, and we haven't heard anything, so I was wondering if you could sort of give us a general idea when you might be able to assist us in sending out the letter.
Margaret, I notice your phone numbers are not here, but I can, I can...
But I have sent you emails.
Okay, thank you.
I, I just have a question, if I could, the relationship between this list of Long Meadow Historical Society, and there's a select board subcommittee or committee, the demolition committee, which reports to the select board, and I presume that by inference they have access to funding from the, you know, the executive branch of the government?
The demolition delay committee?
I believe that they, they would have as much as...
They have access to funds?
Well, they, they have access to request funds, certainly, as a, as a subcommittee of the... Well, they have access to request funds, certainly as a subcommittee of the select board or as a designated committee of the select board. And because some of these, the letter you specifically said is, you should know that you fall under that.
Right.
You would think that not only would the Historical Commission send it out, but so would the demolition committee.
Well, we're doing it kind of jointly.
Right. And so therefore, maybe they can talk to the town manager about getting access to, I assume, duplicating letters and the cost of mailing and that kind of stuff. Because it's far more likely that that would happen, you know, in my opinion, in a more timely manner. But just a quick suggestion.
Is your suggestion to contact Mr. Crane directly about?
Well, I think you, I think you and the demolition committee ought to do that and see what he has to say. Again, because there is an appointed committee of the select board, they may have, you know, the historical.
We all are.
We are too.
They are too.
Okay, well, great. Thank you, Margaret. Thanks for coming in. All right. Well, if we can move to, the next would be the select board comments. I don't know if anyone has any. Marie?
Actually, I wanted to make a comment over the GFOA, which is wonderful. And I know congratulate the employees for the work they've done. But I also want to recognize the Finance Committee. They're the ones who came and brought to us this idea how many years ago? I think when you had just arrived. And they worked very hard advocating it for the select board to pick up. And I think it's been a wonderful project. And it just shows what a great job they did. I know a lot of the people that were on the Finance Committee back then are still on. And thank the Finance Committee for us for bringing that forward. It was a fabulous idea. And I think the town and the residents have really received a lot of benefits from it. So be sure to thank your chair and the other members.
Okay. Any other comments? I got a couple of comments I want to make. One is that in our minutes or our messages, a resident, town resident John Holden purchased an eight thousand dollar drone that he donated to the police department. And I want to thank him publicly for that. Hopefully, he'll get some more thanks. And I want to congratulate Chief Stankowitz, who was elected to the Mass Chiefs of Police Executive Board, which is quite an honor. And then our fire department, we had Captain Mascotta, who was the first deputy fire chief. And I want to congratulate him on that information. And also, our fire chief was elected to, let me see where my notes here. It's in here somewhere. Chief Dearborn was elected to the Vice Chair of Homeland Security Council. And so congratulations, Chief Dearborn, and all those folks who are doing an excellent job of keeping Long Meadow on the cutting edge of what's going on in the area. So I guess we will go. Any other comments? Then we move to the town manager's report. I guess that would be our next.
Sure. Thanks, Tom. I guess if I could just make one brief comment about the email and the records requests, just very briefly. We did get the requests some time ago. We did, I did respond as early as I could. In fact, the search terms that were requested included seven thirty-four Long Meadow Street and the Brewer Young State. I knew most of my correspondence, I called the Young Mansion. So I voluntarily added the Young Mansion to the search terms. There are one hundred and fifteen emails going back to two thousand thirteen regarding this property. And the only reason I mention that is, I mean, I obviously, I turned them all over along with text messages. I mean, I don't know how to do the text message thing very well. So the format that they went over in was not as user friendly, but I don't really know any other way to do it. And I was trying to be prompt. And quite frankly, I spent most of the time, the hours I spent doing this was at home at night on the weekends, not going to my daughter's basketball game. So, you know, I don't feel great about having the suggestion that I'm somehow hiding something. And in terms of, to the board's benefit, working with residents or people who come in for a request for service, in fact, she's not here tonight, but there is someone who has come and spoken at other meetings about against the zone change, who needed some assistance with something she needed for her property. And took her call. She relayed the situation. I responded, put her in touch with the people I felt could help her out in that situation. The assistance was given, you know. But I think I probably said, hey, here's what we need to do. Here's how I think you should do it. Here's what, I talked to the relevant people and here's what they said should happen. And we're going to make it happen for you. She's a resident. This is what I do. If it's a developer, like the medical office building, same process. Pride Station, it's all exactly the same. Andrew and Chris are residents. They called and asked me for assistance. As town planner, I reviewed the long range plan, which I believe was adopted by town meeting in two thousand eleven or twelve. I think it was, a resident told me that. But the purpose of all this is I provide this service for everybody. And sure, sometimes I say, hey, let's do this, you know, we do that. But I'm trying to help residents get the assistance that they need, mostly because I have, other than raising my own card at town meeting as a resident, I'm not a decision maker in any of this. And so my obligation to the communities and the select board is to get, is to put your constituents in a position where they can get the assistance they need or the decisions they need from the relevant decision-making body. So while I can appreciate how this controversial issue is unfolding, and I've been doing this for twenty years, and so there's not a lot surprising that's happening right now, I just want to say for the board's sake, and I guess for those who aren't familiar with the discussion, I fully disclosed all the emails I have access to. I actually expanded the search terms and gave more than was requested. And going back, that trip down memory lane back to, I started in April second, two thousand thirteen. I think May, well, May tenth, I got an email from Marie, who was on the select board, saying, what are we going to do about the Young Mansion? And I went through many emails from, starting a month after I got here. What are we going to do about the Young Mansion? What are we going to do about the Young Mansion? And that has continued on and. And so when a solution presented itself that seemed viable, and all the realtors I had talked to about this and doing all my research, that a single-family home is not economically viable option. An option comes along, seems viable, conforms to our plan. So of course, of course, I'm going to try and help the residents who are asking for that help. And I do it for any resident. So to the point of now, and we'll, we received the petition. And I laid out the town meeting timeline in my report. We'll get to that when we get to that agenda item. I will say on the, good news, I did have some recent discussions with Mass DOT and regarding the Tina Lane rail crossing, which we have closed temporarily. And as you know, the state, our state legislators engaged our federal delegation, specifically Senators Warren, Marky, and Representative Neal, to assist us at the federal level in getting Amtrak's attention on this issue. Because Amtrak owns the crossing and needs to be a partner in the resolution, even though Mass DOT has been supportive of it since very early on, making improvements. And that effort has worked. And now we think we're going to be very close to making an announcement, I think, in early two thousand eighteen about the design being completed and an agreement between Mass DOT and Amtrak being executed that will move the crossing upgrades forward. So that's sooner than I thought it was going to happen. And I'm hoping that we will get that good news very early in two thousand eighteen and we can move that safety improvement forward. I don't, have not seen anything in writing. These are just reports I'm getting. I did ask if I could report this to the board. I was told I could. And so if the crossing does get constructed, the upgrades, it will be ninety percent Mass DOT funding, ten percent Amtrak. So the town would not have an obligation to fund that.
And Stephen, because we had a letter from someone, a resident, asking about that. And so it would be lights at one of those crossings or both of those?
I haven't seen the design, but I think they're calling for bars and lights on both sides.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you.
Actually, there was a report from back in May or June that had the recommendation for those improvements. I could dig it back out if you want. On the concrete issue, I just wanted to let you, we have been looking into it. I know there's a lot of media coverage about the issue. Rich and I talked at length about it. Keep looking into it. I know Senator Lesser is also doing some work on his end to see if, to get the legislature engaged in the way that, in the, similar to the way that the state of Connecticut's legislature got engaged when it was revealing itself as a major problem down there. We don't have any sense of the scope of the problem in Long Meadow, only some anecdotal information. But we're going to try and develop some tools that residents can use to either get more information or make an assessment of their own home. So that process is ongoing, is the one thing. We don't have a lot of town specific things we can do. But I just want the board to know that we're going to try and help out the residents as much as we can and connect them with good information. We did get, just the net metering credit arrangement that we've been talking about for a year and a half, I think, finally went online. So we'll be getting revenue in about thirty-two thousand a year from that project coming online. We had a meeting last week about regional dispatch. As I think I reported before, Hamden and East Long Meadow have both withdrawn. So it is now a two-town dispatch center with Chicopee and Long Meadow. The state nine-one-one office was there. They did not reduce the amount of the grant, the one-point-three-million-dollar grant because of the reduced participation. So we still have full funding for the grant. And Long Meadow and Chicopee are going to proceed through this next phase of work to see what it would take to have us get ready to do a switch over with the target date of July first, two thousand nineteen. And the state reiterated their support for the project. And I think if we hit some milestones, I still believe the other communities will come, will rejoin us. And we may attract new communities who haven't been a part of the process so far. That's it for me.
I just want to come on, because there's a couple of other things in the notes. And one thing was nice to see that the Parks and Rec Department is planning an April fishing derby again. Nice to see them back. I assume it's still named after Mr. Otani. And I saw Cheryl Kudnick for the Finance Department is now a certified mass municipal collector. So congratulations to Cheryl. Now, I had a question about the boilers that were put in at Center School in Blueberry. So, you know, we had a vendor who bid on it and they put in some boilers. But then they said there's a four-to-six-week backup on the burner. And I was thinking, what kind of a boiler doesn't come with a burner? And was that, and was that part of the bidding process? That there would be a burner when they actually installed it? Or is this a surprise to us?
The lead time was, I think, a bit surprising. But it's like, I was trying to come up with analogies. It's basically, you know, the motor for your car is made one place and everything else is made in another place. And they just, you get your car, but the motor is backordered. You know, everything is there, you just can't fire the, you know, you can't turn it on and can't drive it.
You mean a motor vehicle?
Yeah. So the burners, I mean, the burners, sorry, the boilers themselves, it's mostly solid-state. It's piping and cast iron, you know, sections and components. The burners are the things that have the technology in them and they are connected to the gas line and the electricity. And they fire and heat the water or the air, depending on the case, and create the heat. There's a company called Powerflame that makes the best burners out there. And those are the ones we're getting. And, but each burner is basically custom-built for each boiler. And so there's a set of specifications. And so there was back and forth between the architect, or the engineer, the vendor who won the bid, and then the company who produces the burners. And so that somewhat led to some delays. And then Powerflame is closed during the holidays. They'll be closed next week. So that added some extra time to it as well. And I've learned from our facilities director and others that there's no rush when it comes to Powerflame. They just, they're such a popular burner that they produce it when they're ready. We did, we did rent supplemental heaters for both Center and Blueberry. They have active boilers now. But when it gets cold, it's difficult for one boiler to maintain temperature in the school. So we brought in rental heaters for the month. So that when the school is in session, there'll be supplemental heat source for the buildings.
All right. Okay. Yeah, I was just surprised that that wasn't a package deal with that. Okay. Now, the, you also had in your, your town manager report about the special town meeting position is something you want to talk about now? Or should we?
When we get to that agenda item, I can update the board.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Stephen, I know you and I corresponded about this, but I think publicly you ought to comment about the fire engine that was approved at special fall town meeting, not the fire engine, the snowplow, that was approved at special fall town meeting and the status of the snowplow.
So we did, we did find one that was, someone had it in stock. And that was the one that was approved. And so we did get it shortly after town meeting. And it was put into service. And although I'm not allowed to drive a truck that big, I'm told that the, so I can't testify firsthand, I'm told that the, it worked well in the wing plow, which is a new addition to our fleet, worked, they said it worked very well and shortened up some of the clearing times on the main route. And I don't know if they used it on Long Meadow Street or Laurel Street, but they said it worked pretty well.
Yeah, yeah, I talked to Mario. He said that usually they would have two trucks and they were able to just use one truck to get one half of the street and then they'd send it back. So that was pretty good. And then.
And I don't think we need to improve our, increase our mailbox replacement budget.
Oh, that's good. But we did, we do have to retire a fire truck after twenty-five years of service. Engine number two has called it quits. And so it's a good thing we have our new one to step right up.
Yeah, the new one should be here. But you saw the pictures in the packet. People have pictures of trucks, especially firefighters. So it's near completion. The chief took engine number two, which was twenty-five years old, out of service a month or so ago. The water tank leaked, failed. The water tank failed. The, you know, the engine was in a state of failure for quite some time. And it just became no longer safe to operate. And when you have a fire engine that won't hold water, that's kind of a challenge.
Like a boiler that doesn't have a burner?
Correct. Very similar.
They go together.
Oh, yeah. It's a good analogy. So he had taken it out of service. We've been able to, you know, that was our primary rescue engine. So like our accident, like when there's an accident on the highway, that's the one that goes down and has the jaws of life. So we converted, it had a hydraulic system on it. And the jaws of life were hydraulic. We've since converted to battery-operated jaws of life. And we've put those on engine one, which is a newer vehicle. But when the new engine two arrives, it will be equipped to be, again, a rescue, kind of accident scene, specialized vehicle.
Okay, great. Any other questions for the town manager's report? Yes, Marie?
Yes, I guess I often ask for reports to be made in the future. And I think I would be interested in when you do get Freedom of Information Act, something like that just came along, if you could put in your reports. So we sort of have a heads up. I know we've talked offline, but professionally, if it would be in the report, I think it would be helpful in the future. And I know as a master planner, often developers will come and talk to you casually. And I know we have two areas in town in which developers have bought but never asked for rezoning, which is the Williams synagogue and is it church?
First Church or, no.
Yeah, the Christ of Scientists church.
Scientists, yeah. But is there anything on Long Meadow Street that has come to you and developers have purchased? So when that does happen in the future, that could be in the reports. I'd appreciate that. Not that you haven't put it in, but if that does come up in the future. So we will know if there is a movement towards any rezoning in the future. Thank you.
Paul?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you would take something on order. We have Tanya Campbell from the auditor's office. And she is a mother of four. She has an hour drive, well, she does have an hour drive back to Greenfield area. So I was just wondering if you would have a chance to sneak her in.
I'd love to put her in right now, if we could do that. If we're done with the town manager's report. All right, will you please step up and talk about the audits? All right, will you please step up and talk about the audit?
Ernie Welker had to go back home. And I do have a statement and a recommendation from Ernie, if I could read that first for the board. The Audit Committee recommends acceptance of the fiscal year 2017 audited financial reports. Recommendation made by unanimous vote of the Audit Committee members present at its meeting on November 28th, 2017, after reviewing the financial statements and supporting documents provided by the independent audit firm, Melanson &amp; Heath, which is where Tanya is actually from, working for. With appreciation, the Audit Committee acknowledges the dutiful and skillful work of finance director and Melanson &amp; Heath partner, Tanya Campbell, leading the team on our engagement such that the documents are completed timely to meet the GFOA's end of year deadline to apply for its award recognition. That award recognition is for financial reporting and not the budget award that we were speaking about earlier. So there's two distinct awards. The Audit Committee also reviewed and indicated approval of the 2017 comprehensive annual financial report prepared by the town's finance department, mostly the work of myself and Assistant Town Accountant Chris Caputo, with input from the Audit Committee member Pete Landon. Melanson &amp; Heath is to review the draft comprehensive annual financial report to ensure it meets all the GFOA requirements for its CAFRA award. No additional costs will be incurred by drafting the CAFRA in-house in conjunction with Melanson &amp; Heath, where previously this function had cost the town $5,000. So that's this prepared statement by the Audit Committee for opening remarks here.
Okay.
Thank you for that introduction. As Paul said, my name is Tanya Campbell. I'm from Melanson &amp; Heath and I'm the partner in charge of the town's audit. I'm here tonight to talk about the results of the fiscal year 2017 audit and present the comprehensive annual financial report, which we'll go through page by page, you know, 120.
Expect nothing less.
Yeah, right, exactly. And the management letter. But before I get into the actual documents, I wanted to just start by giving a brief overview of what an audit does and does not do. There can be this misconception when people hear the term audit. They think we come in, we pour through every single transaction that goes through the town, we look at every single document, every balance is reviewed, and that is simply not the case. I know, I know, shocking. We can't, we don't look at every single balance. We can't guarantee that every dollar you spent was done so in accordance with federal or state laws and regulations, or even in terms of town policies and procedures. Instead, our audits are conducted under a set of standards known as government auditing standards. Those standards say that we should design our testing using a concept known as materiality. Materiality will vary based on the size of the entity. So for instance, materiality for the town of Long Meadow will be different from that of the city of Springfield, for instance. 2017 materiality for your general fund, your main operating fund of the town, was about $125,000. That doesn't mean we don't look at anything below that amount, because we certainly do. It just means that auditing standards say we should focus our procedures on testing the transactions and balances at or above that level. During the audit, we spend a good deal, the majority of our time, with a higher risk, more significant departments of the town, such as the treasurer's collectors' office, the accounting and finance office, the assessors' office, for instance. And in terms of our audit procedures, we perform, we conduct internal control evaluations over the major transaction cycles of the town. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I have my kids cold here, so I'm, yeah, dealing with that too. So for instance, we'll look at the internal controls over your cash receipt cycle, your cash disbursement cycle, and your payroll cycle. And then design procedures to test those controls and make sure they're operating effectively during the year under audit. We also perform what's known as substantive testing to make sure that the balances that are reported in the town's general ledger and ultimately in the financial statements are adequately supported. So for instance, we'll test to make sure your cash balance is supported by reconciled bank statements from the treasurer's office, or that your receivable balance is supported by detailed balance through reports from the collectors' office. So that's very, very brief overview of what we do. If anyone has any questions, feel free to stop me at any point in time.
Well, I have a question. I mean, I know the big ticket items over $125,000. But is there any sort of random selection in terms of looking at? Because when I, if I, you know, if you're trying to taste soup, you know, you don't want to just test certain parts of the soup. You want to stir it all up and then randomly take a spoonful and then you get all the flavor. And do you ever randomly select certain purchases and then make sure that they follow all the rules?
We do. And that's one of our internal control tests. So for vendor payroll, for instance, we'll test 40 different transactions from the town and randomly select from different departments, different dollar amounts. I mean, that kind of testing where we randomly look at different things and make sure, okay, was this invoice approved by the right person? You know, did it follow the process it should follow before it gets paid? That is all random. Same with procurement. We will take a look at all the expenses that would be subject to procurement and randomly test those and make sure, you know, the town has the proper supporting documentation that they followed all the laws and regulations that are, that those dispersals would be subject to. So yes, there is random.
I find that very comforting. Thank you.
So some of the balances in the, you know, in the general ledger, you know, we might focus on higher risk balances or the higher dollar amount there. But we do do random selections in different types of testing.
Do you have any other questions? Mark, please.
I just want to say that your predecessors went through it page by page, but...
Oh, okay. Well, you know, I can certainly do that if you would like.
Lights off at 11:00.
Oh, there, okay.
My question is something I've asked every year. And that is, have you, as the auditor, had a chance to speak with our Audit Committee absent the presence of any of our professional finance committee?
They have my email and can contact me if they have any questions or concerns. No one has done that. So, you know, I didn't, I've never been to a meeting without Paul, but I think they're aware that they could reach out to us at any point in time if they had any concerns.
I would just like to suggest that perhaps next year, when you have that meeting with the Audit Committee, you ask Paul to step out for 10 minutes and see if there's anything that they want to ask you. Just saying that that's considered a reasonable practice that I'd like to see.
Okay.
They can have as many meetings as they like.
Don't take it personal.
Right, no, I understand. So now, in terms of your comprehensive annual financial report, which I'm going to refer to as CAFRA, because otherwise it would take me about half an hour longer to get through this. These are presented under rules established by the Government Accounting Standards Board, or GASB. We like acronyms in the accounting world, so. And there are typically three sections of the CAFRA. There's introductory section, the financial section, and the statistical section. Now, the introductory section is compiled by the town, by the finance department. And there are certain required components that are, should be included in that, which includes information about the history of the town, as well as some of the structures, the committees, organizational chart, for instance, stuff like that. After that comes your financial section, which is essentially our set of financial statements. And that can get broken into five different components. There's the audit opinion, which is actually the only part of the financial statements that belongs to us. All the other information that's included in the financial statements is compiled based on, taken from information from the town and compiled in accordance with those GASB standards. In fiscal year 2017, we issued the town an unqualified opinion on the financial statements, meaning that based on the results of our audit testing, we felt that the town was in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. After the audit opinion comes management's discussion and analysis, which is like an executive summary to the financial statements. It's a very brief overview of what's included in the financial document, as well as some of the key numbers and results of operations from the past fiscal year. If you wanted to just read a little bit of the financial document, I would recommend starting there because it gives you a good idea of what happened during the past year. After that comes your two sets of financial statements or documents, the government-wide statements and your fund basis statements. And we'll take a look at those pages in just a few minutes. Last part of the financial section is the footnotes, which includes some more general information about the town, as well as some of the detailed schedules to support the balances reported in your financial statements themselves. And last but not least, the last part of the CAFRA is your statistical section, which is also compiled by the town finance department and includes schedules, you know, going back 10 years on financial trends, you know, assessed values, you know, things along that nature. There are certain types of schedules that are required to be reported and the town has also included some other additional information as well. So definitely kudos to the finance department for pulling it all together. It is a lot of work and it's definitely something that is, hopefully we'll have another award to go on your wall this coming year. So that's the goal.
You need a bigger wall.
I know, yeah. Now, if you want to open to page 28 or turn to page 28 on your document, we're going to take a look at one of the pages of the government-wide statements. So page 28 is essentially a balance sheet presented in, sorry. Presented in accordance with governmental activities. Now, these type of statements, as I mentioned before, there are two types of statements. There's the government-wide statements and the fund basis. The government-wide statements, which is one of what we're looking at right now, is essentially GASB's way of taking governmental operations and showing it like a business. So you take and you consolidate the funds together, your general fund, your special revenue, your grant funds, your capital project funds. And then you add long-term assets and liabilities. So for instance, we'll add your capital assets and your long-term liabilities like bonds payable, your net OPEB obligation, your net pension liability. While these statements do a good job in terms of showing the true assets and liabilities of the town, they're not as meaningful to the end users of the financial statements, such as, you know, the board, your financial advisors, the bond rating agencies. Because the town does not operate like a business. I mean, these statements are not what you use to make your decisions on a day-to-day basis. So, you know, while other agencies look at these, they don't spend a lot of time on these sets of statements. They tend to focus more on the fund basis. But before I move on to those, I want to just point out some of the key numbers on this page. About three-quarters of the way down, under your non-current liabilities, you have the net OPEB obligation, which at the end of 2017 was about $17 million. Now, I'm not sure if you recall, but back in 2009, when the town was required to book that liability, GASB said that you could calculate what the total liability would be and these are for your retirement benefit costs. Calculate the liability, amortize it over a 30-year period, and then book a little bit each year. So this $17 million, which is shy of $17 million, is a result of booking a little, a portion of that liability for the past eight years. They have sent, changed their mind, and starting in fiscal year 2018, the town will be required to book the entire liability on the government-wide statements. Now, we don't have final numbers from your actuary at this point in time because they still need to go through the process of calculating that, but the liability will increase to approximately $36 million next year.
Big jump.
It's a big jump. Every city in town is going to have a big jump in that liability. So they're, you know, it's going to be uniform in terms of consistency there. It's going to look that much worse for everyone next year and everyone's required to implement that next year. You know, as you're aware, there's no requirement to fund that liability at this point in time, unlike your net pension liability where, you know, you have a funding schedule with the retirement system. The town is setting aside money into an OPEB trust fund and it does have about a million and a half at the end of 2017. And you do have like a funding, you know, process for that. So that is certainly good and it's definitely looked favorably upon by bond rating agencies and financial advisors, things like that. Which is something to be aware of next year, that number is going to look much bigger. And, you know. Now, the next number I wanted to look at on this page is the number right below that, your net pension liability, which at the end of 2017 was about $46 million. That represents the town's share of the Hampden County Retirement System's unfunded liability. And as I mentioned before, and as you're very well aware, there is a funding schedule for that. That $46 million, you know, the town is about 12.7% of the Hampden County Retirement Systems' fund, based on, you know, the size of the town, the covered payroll, I believe they use to allocate your share of the liability. And as of the Hampden County Retirement System's most recent valuation, which was 1-1, 2016, they were approximately 47% funded. Which, based on what we've seen from other systems, you know, that's right, kind of right in the middle of the pack. There's some that are lower. Springfield, for instance, I think is like 26% funded and some that are slightly higher. But that's certainly somewhere in the mid-range, it's not really bad and it's not exceptionally well, like some of them. But certainly nothing to be overly concerned about. And you, like as I said, you do have a funding schedule. So hopefully that liability will continue to decrease over the years. Does anyone have any questions on that? What's that?
Yeah, so we beat that to death.
I know, yeah, I mean. So that was all I was going to look at on this page, is really kind of the key numbers I wanted to point out there. The next page we're going to look at is page 30. Which is your governmental funds balance sheet. And again, this is more in line of what you're used to looking at on a monthly basis, with a couple minor exceptions. The first column there, which says general, that is not only just the general fund of the town, but it's also the stabilization fund. Back in 2011, GASB wanted to make reporting consistent between cities and towns and states and make, you know, governmental entities in general consistent with how they reported their stabilization or their rainy day funds. And because the states report their rainy day funds as part of the general fund, now all the cities and towns need to report their stabilization fund with their general fund on their fund basis financial statements. Which, you know, I think is a little misleading, but the idea is that you're able to use it for kind of whatever the town needs to use it for, so therefore it should be included with your general fund. Bottom section of this page, where it says fund balances, there is detail on page 59 that breaks out what's included in each one of those categories, if you wanted to look at that. Because there are kind of some big numbers lumped together there. But one key number I wanted to talk about was your unassigned number in your general fund, which was about $5.8 million at the end of 2017. $3 million of that represents your general stable... $3 million of that represents your general stabilization fund balance, which calculates out to be about 5% of the town's annual operating budget, which is a very respectable balance to have in your general fund. I mean, obviously, the more, the better, but it's certainly, in terms of, like, rules of thumb, it's a, it's a good percentage to be at. It's not too low. So, so that is good in terms of what the town has done to set aside money into the stabilization fund. The remaining portion of that unassigned balance is your general fund undesignedated or unreserved balance, which is available to be spent, so it hasn't been set aside or reserved for any other purpose, which is about $2.8 million at the end of 2017. That calculates out to be about 4% of the town's annual budget, which, again, is also a healthy number to be looking at, so it's good. The other thing I just wanted to point out real quickly on this page was, the third column there is a solid waste fund. The town treats that as an enterprise fund, but for our financial reporting purposes, an enterprise fund is supposed to operate like a business. It's supposed to make enough money to support its costs. And in looking at the operations in 2017, we didn't feel that we could report it as an enterprise fund for financial reporting purposes because it didn't meet what's required of the standards. So because about 75% of the revenue or the, the funding of that, of what's being spent out of that fund is, comes from the general fund, is transferred in from the general fund, we are reporting it as a major governmental fund. It's not included with your, with your other enterprise funds. So I just want to point that out. If you're looking at that there and wondering why that's there as opposed to not with your water and sewer funds, that would be why. It doesn't affect in terms of, you know, how the town does anything per se, although we do have a recommendation that the town look at that in the management letter. That is why it's reported there, so I just wanted to mention that.
What's, what are the non-major governmental funds?
That includes your special revenue or your grant funds and some of your trust funds. If you look towards the back of the report, page, starts on page 85, there's a series of about five, four pages that list the different types of funds. So you have your school lunch fund, your Chapter 90 fund, as well as, you know, town and school grants. Everything that's not included in all the other. So that was all I was going to touch on in terms of the financial statements, unless anyone has any specific questions on any of the other pages, or really wants me to go through it page by page.
You've given us plenty of information.
Okay, and you can always email me, you have my card.
Yeah, but thanks for pointing out some of the big number changers for us. All right, if that's it, thank you very much.
Yeah, I mean, did you want to talk about the management letter?
I don't know, is there any other?
There's no?
Yeah, I mean, the management letter is fairly straightforward. I mean, I don't consider anything major that was presented in there. You do have my responses and the dates, and the associated parties will be responsible for those corrective actions. You may recall, I do a corrective action plan in a different format, that the next time that I update that will probably be sometime in the spring. I will have it in that format, and most of these will probably be, have been taken care of by that, let's say, March 31st update. Again, some of them are being looked at as we speak already. I know, as an example, the lock on the treasurer's door has been ordered, so we'll get that installed as soon as that comes in, and the other little things. I know the treasurer collector's office is looking at the quantity of the bank accounts also. But again, there are timetables, there are responsible parties. I don't know if there's any other questions on any of those findings, as they're called? Any other thing? I think the, all the prior year findings from FY '16 and prior that had been carried forward have now been cleaned up also, which was nice to get those off of this list at this point in time.
I guess the only question I would have is, in terms of our record-keeping, I mean, do we have a, are we mostly electronic? I know we have some hard copy stuff that we probably, are we where we need to be in terms of that?
Um, yeah, I would think so. I mean, you're right in line with most cities and towns. There's more and more people who, or towns that use Munis, they're starting to scan things in, because I think there's a process in terms of linking things together. I mean, no one's really scanning invoices or payroll at this point in time. Everything is, is definitely kept paper, on paper. No one's really kind of taken that leap yet in the governmental world. You know, purchase orders and bid documents, you know, scanning those all in at the end of the, end of the process, that's, I'm starting to see that more and more, but I think people are kind of hesitant to do much more than that.
Okay.
Definitely in line with what we've seen other places.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Tanya.
You're welcome.
And I guess we'll see you next year.
Yep.
Okay, nice report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we need to, a few things first is, we need to approve the minutes of December 4th. Is, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
We approve the minutes of December 4th, 2017.
Second? We have a second on the?
Yes, second.
Okay, then we have that. All those in favor? Okay, great. And the next we have is a zone change petition that was sent to the clerk, and do we, let me see where the, where is this? So we have a petition.
So Tom?
Find the right place. Yes, please.
The petition was received and the signatures were certified, the requisite number of signatures were certified on December 12th. So as we talk about timelines, day one is 12/12.
Okay. And so the next step is, so these are, we have certified signatures, so the next step is it goes to the town planning?
Yeah, the board will then, the board will vote tonight to remit the petition to the planning board.
Okay.
And that would conform with the first of the timelines.
Okay. All right, is, I don't know if there's any questions on that? That goes to them, and then after that, it comes back to, to us, and once they've made a vote on it and decision, and it'll have a, a public hearing, but will you have a date on that?
It wouldn't come back to the board.
Well, we would have to set a date for the town meeting.
A date?
Special town meeting.
Yeah. The date, not be, according to the process, the board must select a date for the town meeting now, or must anyway, regardless of the action the planning board takes on the petition. They have received a petition for a special time meeting, the board must hold a special time meeting.
Smart.
Stephen asked that I attend.
Yeah, I'd like to call up the town council.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because to address the issue of timelines, there's been a lot of discussion about timeline, publicly and privately, and Mr. Schneider, you and I had a phone conversation, I'm going to make that public right now.
Yes, we did.
I expressed my concern that, from your firm, we had two letters that, in my opinion, which differs from somebody else's, told us two different things.
And with all due respect, I disagree with your characterization.
I absolutely understand that, but up until Friday afternoon, or Friday morning, we, you know, I was under the impression that we had a six-month timeline, and, and Friday we got an email from you, from you through the town manager that indicates something different from that. And the issues come up over state law, Chapter 48, Section 5, versus Chapter 39, Section 10, and which one prevails and which one is, is, is the dominating issue, whether it's a, we must call a town meeting in 45 days, or, or real estate zoning changes can, can proceed up to six months. And I think it's important that we have, hear from you uniformly what that ruling is and what advice we're being given, so that we open this up to the fresh air, because as you can hear, there's a lot of people in town.
Understood.
Who think that that's not happening.
I can unequivocally tell you that, in light of a citizen's petition, which is how this was brought to you, you must hold a special town meeting within 45 days. The zoning act sets out more timing milestones, where you have to hit certain tasks within various time periods. The first one you're in right now, within 14 days of receiving the, the certified petition, you're supposed to send it to the planning board. So that's the first timing milestone to hit. There's no, there's nothing stopping you from doing that on day two or day one, but we're now at day seven.
So let me get this, oh, just to clarify then, so you mentioned that because we've received a petition, that's, you know, we, we follow one set. If it had come through a different format, like if it had gone to the planning board first, and then came to us, we would follow a different order? Is that what I'm interpreting?
You would, you would follow the same order? Has everyone received the correspondence we sent from Friday? Okay, Friday morning? You would follow the same order that I lay out of the timing milestones?
Yeah.
But you wouldn't have a 45-day time limit within which to hit all of them, because it's not a citizen's petition?
Because, because it would have already gone through planning, and they would have taken a certain amount of time, I'm not sure.
Well, they're, they're allowed a certain amount of time. There are certain bodies that can, that ex officio can start a zoning amendment. Select Board is one. The zoning board of appeals is another.
Okay.
Planning board is a third, and a, a group of citizens, under a citizen's petition, is another. And when that avenue is used, the time limits get a lot tighter.
Okay.
You have to read both statutes together. It's a little bit of a Rube Goldberg machine.
Well, I think it was a little confusing for most of us. I know I was, but, but so you're saying there's four different approaches to this zoning change, and based on the one that we've, that's currently happening for this zone change for the, for the Brewer Mansion, you're saying we have to set a meeting within how many days?
Forty-five days of receiving the, of having received the petition, and that is, that's crystal clear in the statutes.
Okay.
I mean, the Chapter 39, Section 10, for example, does not say, except in the cases of a zoning amendment, you must hold within 45 days. It says you must hold it within 45 days.
Well, it's nice to have you here in person, because reading this wasn't.
It's nice to be seen.
Reading this wasn't quite the same.
Well, you should have tried writing it. I mean, the, I mean, the legislature, not our office.
So I have a question. So now the process is, we have 14 days to get, send this to planning.
Yep.
And then after, where I read someplace where it said that only after that do we set town meeting. That was one of them, right? But you say we have to set it now.
I, I think as a logistical planning matter, you should set it now and make that timeline known to the other board that needs to act on this, so you don't run afoul of the 45 days.
But is there still, do we still have to have an open forum? Because then there said first you have to have, not a, not a town meeting, but it's...
We don't. The planning board has to have a...
They still have to, right.
Yes.
Has to have an open meeting.
And, and, and it should come back to you for actually setting the warrant, but, but yes.
Marie, please.
And the 45 days is what date in January? Did we figure that out?
Forty days from the 12th?
Forty-five days from the 12th is, there are three holidays in there, so it would end up being Monday, the 29th, thank you.
Okay.
That's why we have the numbers guy here. We, so in our dialogue with the school district department, we were looking at the Friday before as kind of the last day, because I think it would be the end of the day, Monday, close of business on Monday is usually how that stuff works with the deadlines, for the, to hit the time. And so I think Bill, you, you said you have to schedule the meeting. I think, well, I want to be clear, you have to hold the meeting. Not just pick a date within 45 days, you actually have to execute the meeting within the 45 days, which, and I will say, for whatever it's worth, independent from our request to town council, our town clerk had already reached out to the Secretary of State's office, unbeknownst to me, and when I informed the clerk what the opinion was on the timeline, she said, "Yeah, I know, the Secretary of State's office already told me that." So, so between town council's opinion and the clerk's own independent, you know, conversation with Secretary of State's office, I put forward the proposed timeline to the board, to the board on Friday. As I've said from the very beginning, when we knew this was happening, town meeting, the moderator feels strongly that it should be in the gymnasium. That is where we have our town meetings, it's where we can easily accommodate great variances in crowd size. The ability, the ability to have that available, not the ability, but the availability of the gym or really the high school parking lot is been, is a key factor. And so we met with the superintendent and the, and the assistant principal today to go over schedules and events and everything else, and within this 45-day timeline, Thursday the 25th is really the date that just seems to work the best, and that is with the school district moving a fairly significant event from, it's in the Business and Technology Center, but there'll be 100 people there, which means, which means 50 to 100 parking spaces that won't be available, available for town meeting voters, and they're willing to relocate that event. The other thing is I did correspond with the moderator to find out what her availability was, and that date does work for her.
Marie, please.
And is Thursday okay with the charter? Because we always have them on Tuesdays. Or is it only talking?
I didn't look at that question.
Oh, well, we do have a charter permission.
Yeah, the, the annual town meeting is the only one that I think...
Only the annual?
It's not, it's not special.
It's not? Okay, so we're fine. Thank you.
I did not get a chance to look at the bylaws, but I've never heard of the bylaws restricting the special town meetings, especially since it doesn't matter with, you know...
You have to comply with the statute. I mean, the charter wouldn't control in that situation.
Yes, Marie.
I sort of like it at the end of the 45 days anyways, because it seems like a short period, and this way we know everyone gets information and knows that's out there. And so the 25th, I prefer that than earlier in the month, if we're really going to try to get as many people out there to voice their opinion.
And the planning board still needs to follow its statutory notice provisions. So you've got a, you've got a tight timeline, and then you've also have mandated waiting periods really, or notice periods.
Yeah.
So I, I think you're going to end up there in the process anyhow.
Mike, I'm good.
Yes, please.
You said about getting it back from the planning board to set the warrants. Could the warrant be set without the planning board's report?
The, the public hearing cannot happen without a planning board report being ready, or the passage of 21 days since they closed their meeting.
Right.
So logistically, in order to comply, I would strongly suggest that the planning board issue a report.
No, not in their report. What I'm saying is they have a 14-day minimum notice requirement for a public hearing.
Yes.
We have a 14-day minimum warrant posting requirement for a special town meeting. If we assume that the citizen's petition itself is going to be the article that's in the warrant, could the select board set and close the warrant before the planning board has had its public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
And then you can either, they either deliver a report that evening, and the vote can happen, or people are there and can't hear, hear the, have the vote.
And if there needed to be a change of the warrant, we could open the warrant and change it?
Yes, but I, citizens petitions are sacrosanct, so you shouldn't...
All right, citizen petition, stop. Yes, Marie, and then Richard.
Or the, the other option is we have a special select board meeting to do it right after the planning board delivers their report to us, which could even be that night.
Well, the report is to the meeting. They have to be able to deliver a report at the meeting that evening. They don't issue one, they're not compelled to issue one prior.
But is it, does it, is it right for us to set the warrant before we even have had the public meeting?
We've done that.
I think you're compelled to.
We just did that.
We are compelled to set the warrant.
Just by the, by the calendar and... Just by the calendar and...
Oh, okay.
So just by virtue of example, even though it wasn't a zone change per se, it's, I mean, zone change is a zoning bylaw amendment. We just did a couple of zoning bylaw amendments. The planning board did not have their public hearing until the warrant was posted. And then the planning board made their recommend, made their report to town meeting, not back to the select board. So this is essentially the same thing that we just did back in November.
That's correct.
Any other questions or comments? And I know that, you know, we did receive quite a few letters from folks and we did, some folks who reminded us of us, other special town meetings. For example, with the shops, when we had to have a special town meeting, there was nine hundred-plus residents who attended that. So, you know, there isn't, there shouldn't be, we shouldn't be too concerned about a lack of attendance. I think that there's been a lot of discussion on this issue and I really am encouraging people to attend the town meeting as a resident. Big decisions, we should get as many people there as possible.
Tom, not to be facetious, but a quorum, I don't think is going to be an issue.
No, okay. I don't think so.
So, sorry.
I just wanted to clarify, the planning board public forum is what date and time and where?
We don't know yet.
Oh, it was not...
It's not up to us, it's up to the town.
No, I thought they'd already said it.
So we are going to...
The first operative moment is when...
We remitted this petition to the, to the planning board. Our job is to remit it to the planning board. When they receive it, they have to set a public hearing. They can also set internal meetings, but they have to set a public hearing. Once they set a public hearing, it starts their clock turning, because they can't, they have to give fourteen days notice before that public hearing.
Correct.
You know, and, and, you know, we're setting a town meeting based on the warrant. If the warrant as submitted to us is flawed, is rejected, it's not, none of our, our doing what the, that's what the issue's going to be at the town meeting, as written in the warrant that was submitted to us. We don't get to change that.
No, you don't get to edit that.
I guess the reason I was saying that...
Neither does the planning committee.
Is I want to be sure that that information gets out there. And this is our last meeting, that we'd be able to probably do that. So I just want to make sure the town...
To do what?
That to inform everyone when the planning board's public hearing is.
But we don't know.
I know, I'm saying when we find out. I want to make sure it's clearly put out there.
Believe me.
It won't, it won't be before January second.
Okay.
We meet again on the second. We'll probably have a date by then, even though the planning board will not have met. I did advise the planning board chair that he should correspond with his members in anticipation of this, so they can nail down some dates and get a room that can handle a significant crowd. I mean, there's...
I think that's a good idea.
The, yeah, I mean, there's, the ultimate say in this is going to happen on that night.
Right.
On the town meeting night. But there's a lot of logistical considerations in addition to the statutory processes that we have to follow. And that's really what I spend most of my time dealing with, to make sure that the town does the process right. And then, oh, by the way, we have a room big enough that can accommodate the meeting and that the schedules account for that. And that's, this is my involvement in this. And so I think, I, you know, the forty-five days, I'll be honest with you, that wasn't, didn't work great from the logistical side of it. That wasn't working great for me either. But it is what it is. And so, like I said, we, there was, I sent out in the message today a variety of variables. I'm just going to review for mass consideration. But it basically was schedule at the school with events and not just the gymnasium. Like I said, if you have, parking is a premium if you have a large turnout, especially with elderly residents. And if there's already another event here with a lot of cars, it makes a challenge. The moderator's schedule. Giving the planning board enough time to have their notices and public hearing held, which I think they're going to do it the week of the eighteenth, is what, is what I've heard from them, but I haven't seen anything official. And the holiday, and the holidays, by the way. And the, you know, holiday season. The nineteenth is also, or the fifteenth is also a holiday. So we went through quite a bit of time and the schedules with the school administrators, and that's what we came up with.
Was the date the twenty-fifth?
Thursday, the twenty-fifth is the recommended date.
Good, I'd like to place a motion on the table that we establish January twenty-fifth for the, for the date of our next town, our special town meeting.
Do you want to...
That's a motion?
You should remit the petition to the planning board first.
First, okay.
Okay.
Then I'll place a motion on the table. We submit the petition to the planning board tomorrow morning.
Okay. And is there a second on that motion?
I'll second.
You'll second it? Okay. Open for discussion?
What's your discussion?
Three holidays. You don't count the holidays.
January twenty-fifth, January first, and January fifteenth.
Ask your attorney that question. If it's forty-five days... I get, I, if I'm out of line, Tom, you throw me out. But I get forty-five days as the twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth of January?
Of January. Now, I understand what Mr. Crane's saying about the three holidays, but I would get that opinion from, from your attorney, not from Mr. Crane.
From forty-five official days? I mean...
The statute says forty-five days without, without reference to holidays.
No reference to holidays. And the twenty-fifth would be the same.
No offense, but I just did the math. You count, I get, I get the twenty-fifth is forty-five days.
So that's a lot of days.
I, I did count.
Yeah.
And I had the, and I had the clerk count as well. And we, we compared notes and we were both said the twenty-sixth. And then it occurred to us after that it could be three days later because of the holidays not being counted, the statute is. But I think, I think those guidance you received from the Secretary of State that, because generally speaking, when you, like forty, the forty-eight hour no posting requirement for meetings, they say forty-eight hours, not including holidays. Usually not including holidays is a standard thing. It just doesn't say it in that statute.
The statute does not, does not credit holidays. So I would, I would, I would advise that you, the town hold the meeting within forty-five calendar days.
But it's still the twenty-fifth.
I believe so.
But if we, we have it on the twenty-fifth.
But we have it on the twenty-fifth, we'd be...
Right. The twenty-sixth is the forty-fifth day, the twenty-fifth is within the deadline.
So we're fine at the twenty-fifth.
Right.
Either way, counting holidays or not. Okay.
Okay, and just as we, we're over the discussion on this, I just a question. So the planning board is going to hear all these folks from both sides of this issue, sort of talk about what they believe the future vision of the town should be. And then do they have to vote that night? Or do they get to sit on it?
I don't think they do.
They're not required to vote that night? So, okay.
They may.
They may, or they may, depends.
You know, as you know, as town planner, I work with the planning board regularly. And they have had public hearings where they have deferred decision-making after the public hearing. And they've had public hearings where they have voted immediately after the public hearing. It depends on the situation and the item. They reserve that right as elected officials to take, take that act.
So the suspense builds, yes?
I think, I have to second, did anyone second him?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, you did, okay.
He seconded, yeah. Any other discussion on the motion? All right, I guess we'll vote then. Motion for the twenty-fifth, all those in favor?
No, we're voting.
The motion is to remit the petition to the planning board.
All those in favor? Okay.
Now I'd like to place a motion on the table that we set the January twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen date as our next special town meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Okay.
I did, I've checked. Does everybody agree it's twenty-six days? The twenty-sixth would be the forty-fifth day?
January twenty-sixth.
Would be the forty-fifth day.
Is the forty-fifth day.
Yeah, that's what I counted up to. And that's counting straight to without giving credit for holidays.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? All right. So it's in the hands of the planning board. We have a date for the meeting set. Is there any other? I think we're done, right?
Well, just as a logistical matter, has Mr. Holland and the balance of the planning board been made aware of the tight timeline here? Okay. Okay, great.
Great. All right. Thank you.
Twenty-seven o'clock, we didn't say, but the twenty-fifth, seven P.M.
Oh, it's seven P.M., yes.
And we didn't put a location on it.
At the Long Meadow High School gym.
That ought to be in the motion.
Yeah, it really should be. You want to amend the motion?
Yes.
Okay. I place an amendment to the motion. The time of the meeting will be at seven P.M. And the location will be the gym at our auditorium or at the high school in Long Meadow.
Okay, second amendment, okay. All those in favor?
Thanks for picking that up.
Okay.
Snow day?
So we can move on.
Statute doesn't contemplate snow days.
It doesn't contemplate snow days.
That's God's intervention, I guess, if there's snow day. So, okay. The next thing would be the recycling fee change.
No, the weekend before.
We move on to that. And so we've all been sent a list of the changes to the recycling and yard waste center fees and ice grid put together by Marie Maza. The biggest change is going to be resident stickers going from forty to forty-five dollars. So... I don't know if we should, yes?
And I know there's gentlemans here at Four Seasons to have a change of hours.
Liquor license.
All right, yeah. I guess we could do that, yeah. The, we did have a request for the change of hours for establishments that are selling liquor. And so I don't know if someone, I guess...
Four Seasons?
Deb, do you want to? Do we have a petitioner who's asking for us to that? Okay, yes, please introduce yourself and your address.
I'm Joe Andrews, owner at Four Seasons Wine and Liquors.
Four Seasons, okay.
Basically, I just wanted to change the hours that everyone else at town has. Somehow our hours used to be the same as everybody's, but now it's just from nine to nine. I don't know why that happened, but... And also, the fact that New Year's Eve and Christmas Eve, this year falls on a Sunday. We would like to open at ten o'clock. That, some people tell me that everybody else already opens at ten o'clock. We've been opening only at twelve all this time, which I like to keep opening at twelve, but have that option to open at ten required.
Because New Year's...
Because, and Christmas, yes.
People might want to go to the liquor store. Okay, makes sense, reasonable. Yes.
I just have a question. I mean, there are no, there are no facilities in Long Meadow that currently open at ten o'clock. You're talking about people outside of Long Meadow?
Yes, around us, they open at ten.
Springfield or Enfield or...
And I don't wish to open at ten, but for Christmas Eve,
New Year's Eve.
And New Year's Eve, we would like to, because everybody else is going to...
Okay, all right. So, Marie.
So the change of hours is open on Sundays? Or did you want to open later?
Have that option. If the competition already opened, they already opened later than night. And we used to have, and my license used to say eight to eleven. Somehow, I don't know what happened, but now they say nine to nine.
The A B C C changed the generic license, and which allows towns the option to change the hours, which is what you saw. So, and I think that's what I was reading, is that there was a statewide part of the modernization thing of allowing stores to do generically, to do different things. So what you're doing is asking us to expand your hours that into more hours that are now available with this change of state, state regulations.
But my, my reading of this is that they just have to notify us that they're, that that's what they're doing. They can do that by right, we can't deny them. Right?
I'm not sure.
I didn't see that.
I mean, the state, the law is they can open it at ten. Right?
I'll defer to the liquor, the liquor license expert.
The advisory.
That's what it says. Yeah.
But...
Under the law, as a matter of right, they can open at ten. They do not need the approval of the local licensing authority, but they must notify the local licensing authority about the change of hours.
So we don't have to vote on it?
We don't have to vote on it. You just have to notify us, and that's what you're doing.
My interpretation.
Still, my license is going to say...
So we do have to take some action.
My hours are from nine to nine and twelve to five.
She'll do it.
No, we'll change the hours on your license.
Okay.
I'll do this tomorrow, I'll fix it.
So I'll be able to open at ten on Sunday?
Upon receipt of the request, the local licensing authority must approve it. So there's, there's a form that we have to approve, apparently?
I have one for you to sign. But he has all the right paperwork, it was just the bulk of the corporate work.
All right. So what do we need, a motion to approve the request?
For signing it, we might as well.
Sure, go ahead, Richard.
What is, what are we, place a motion on the table? Do we approve the request for hour change for the Four Seasons Wine and Liquor?
Okay, we have a second, Marie, okay. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Okay.
We have a similar request from, from another shop as well, Richard. So repeat your...
Yeah, what's the other one?
Do they have to come and inform us? No?
I don't know.
I have his paperwork to...
They don't have to show up here if they...
Yeah, I think they just need to inform him, they've already...
Just inform us and notify us. Okay, so if we could have a motion for the...
I had a, I think there was a typo in that. The bottle shop?
Bottle shop.
It says they want to new Sunday hours, oh, wait, to extend the hours of operation Sunday from existing twelve P.M. till eleven. But they don't, they close it like on Sunday at five. Don't care. It's kind of weird that they...
Should we have them come in?
New Sunday hours pending local approval be ten AM until eleven PM, is that what the law says?
Eleven, they can stay until eleven.
On Sunday? Eleven PM?
Yeah, every day. And the day before holiday, you can be open at thirty.
Yeah, because he closes right now at five.
Oh, he does?
No, it's Sunday, he's closing at five.
I think that's just a typo. Yeah, it's just, yeah.
So do we need a motion then for?
Yeah, we had a motion for the other one, so I guess we'll place a motion on the table that we accept the recommendations and agree to the change of hours for the bottle shop in Long, Town of Long Meadow.
So we're done?
Second, Marie, you second it?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, so that's approved and all set, so, great. So I guess now we can move on to the changes. Last time, we requested more information on the proposed recycling changes, fee changes. So, does this grid answer everyone's questions? Is there any questions?
Yeah, yeah. Do you want Arlene to come up?
I'll have Arlene come up. I don't know, we could have questions, we could.
Yes.
Yes, please.
This was a big area of contention.
Yeah.
Now, Arlene, you can go home. Thanks for waiting three hours, you can go home.
All right, I'm just here for answering questions if you have them.
Yeah.
Just as a backdrop, you do understand our fees have gone, our expenses have gone up, and that's what this reflects.
Yeah. I mean, my only question was, I was surprised that, I didn't even know you could get a second sticker for ten dollars.
Well, that's for a second car, so if you have, if you're a two-car family and you want to have a sticker on both cars, it's a cheaper to the second car. Many, I don't have the numbers with me of how many second stickers we sell, but fair amount.
But wouldn't a household with one sticker probably dispose of just as much stuff as a household with two stickers, and why would it have to go up five dollars, I guess? I mean, you, so.
I thought it was going to be easy.
Why would it matter how many stickers you have?
Well, just so you don't have to keep trading cars.
No, but you wouldn't have to, you wouldn't dispose of more.
He's saying, keep the second sticker at the same ten bucks. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
No, the first sticker is, oh, you mean instead of the second sticker? It was just, it was really just to cover some of the administrative costs, frankly. That's all it is. But don't forget, our budget or the recycling center expenses include the clerk, some of the clerk time and some of the admin time. But if that's something that you feel strongly about, that's, that's not, that's not significant. As much as the other, the other requests are far more significant than that one.
Yeah. I don't know if it's.
And I don't have the authority to say that.
If we should look at this as an à la carte thing, or as a whole thing, I don't know.
You ask any questions you want, I mean, that's really the thought.
So, at the meeting where this first came up, and the reason the questions were raised, was the perception, right or wrong, that certain items that had a free or an insignificant initial disposal, bulk items, for example, construction debris, now, in addition to your sticker fee, has a disposal fee.
No, they always had, they always had a disposal fee. All bulk items had a disposal fee. In the past.
So where it says down below bulk items, construction debris, whatever, NA, it's not because.
No, the only difference there is.
Because it's the half truck SUV.
Yeah, because this is to help the attendance at the gate when the people come in and they say, well, it's not a full car load, it's a third car load, not a half car load. It's just to give some structure to the, the opinion of the attendant at the gate, because some residents have been confrontational, and this is just to help them out. It really probably won't change anything in the way they're billed.
But the question that came up, though, was, so the sticker just allows you to go in the door and pay an additional rate, and I think one of the, at least I remember, a discussion here is, why don't we just bump the price of sticker and lower the price of, you know, some of the disposal fees, or in fact, one of the suggestions that came up with this, maybe when you get a sticker, every resident gets a coupon that's numbered that gives them one free carload of disposal kind of thing, and that way, the people who abuse it or use it frequently, the people who are making trips back and forth, or from what we heard, you know, is that there are some people who use their Long Meadow sticker for commercial and clean out houses in the area and bring them down to the town recycling system, whether that's true or not. The question is, you know, should people, residents of town feel for my thirty dollars now to be a thirty-five dollar?
That's a senior.
Okay.
Forty to forty-five.
For a forty-five dollar sticker fee, do I get to at least one load of disposal as part of that?
Well, don't forget that that forty-five dollar fee is covering a lot of other materials that you're not being charged for at all. Propane tanks, batteries, lots of things you can drop off at the swap shop. There's no fee for that at all. There's no fee for the yard waste per trip, and believe me, that's a very, very popular part of this entire program. Our fees are lower than, our annual sticker fees are lower than most anywhere in Western Massachusetts, number one. My theory and the way we've tried to look at this is, and this is sort of what, from my job with D P, was that the sticker fee should sort of pay for the fixed costs and the per item fees of the variable cost. So we try to not char, we in Long Meadow try to not charge more for the TV or for the couch or for the, then it costs us to get rid of it. So that's, it's very, it's quite close. It's not exact, but it's quite close in terms of that. And they are, our fixed fees include things like, well, includes transportation, for instance, of the yard waste to another location. We can't, we don't have a spot in Long Meadow to deal with that, and includes the fees of the attendant, and not only, not only their salary, but we pay their medic, I mean, any kind of benefits they get. It's not just the bare bones of it. So we're paying all of that out of the fixed cost. And we try to look at it every year, Paul, and I say, and we're, because of the things that keep getting added to what we're paying for out of that, that service area, we're not bringing in as much as we're spending, yes.
So you, so on here, because I interpret it that way to the NA, so none of the items that have been free in the past?
Those items, that was not a free in the past.
So it's basically the same.
It's basically, it just gives a structure to it, just so when they're looking, so instead of the resident being arguing with them, it says, this is actually a half, so I'm going to charge you this. It just puts a little bit more structure to it.
Well, I'm glad Mark was listening last week, or last, two weeks ago, when I said that, you know, I get a sticker and it's like, once a year I have some lumber that I can't put into my trash bin, and I, and then I have to pay extra.
Well, you're, you're one of the unusual ones.
I guess I.
Truly, we sell probably, no, to be very honest, we sell like, three thousand homes.
Yeah.
Out of the fifty-five hundred homes. This is, it's very popular, and it's open three days a week during the season, it's open twelve months a year. There's never time you can't get rid of this stuff. It's an enormous, obviously I'm passionate about it, but it's an enormous, it is a huge service to the community, and it's very convenient. And, you know, we're crippling over, and I don't necessarily disagree with you, that wasn't necessarily my idea, the ten to the fifteen. I'm not going to fight for it, but I don't have the authority to change it, but you're certainly, you have the authority to change it to the ten dollars, if that makes you feel better. It's the other fees that are really much more, much more important, because they reflect increased costs to us, real costs.
Yeah, I know.
You know, we're not trying to make, we're not trying to make, fluff this and make money to use it for something else. This is really bare bones to run that operation.
To keep it going, yes.
I just want to build at that point, and this is a serious point, even though I was going to make light of Arlene's involvement by tying it to the audit committee or the auditor's statement about.
Solid waste.
How as a business concern, we're not doing real good in the recycling solid waste account, but I think, in all sincerity, I think Arlene's comment that it is not a profit center, it's not a place we make money, if you remember what she said about that account, and that we should probably not have it as an enterprise account, because the, because we subsidize it from the general fund to keep costs low and make it a pay-go type of operation. You know, we just heard that, I don't know, within the hour, and I think that's an important thing to remember when we're talking about these fees, it really is, it is not a profit center in the, in that accounting demonstrates that.
Well, Tom, but even more importantly, I mean, you know, the point is, some of these, the availability of this service and some of these fees keep things out of our general trash stream.
And out of the woods.
Right, and so, the intent is that maybe this ought to be more heavily, I guess, is the right phrase, subsidized by our general fund, because it is a cost avoidance as well as a, an opportunity. It's avoidance, you know, whatever other costs there are. And so, I don't think there's anything to be ashamed of saying it's not totally, fully a business that sustains itself. I think it's part of the cost of running the town here. I appreciate that it's close, but I don't think it needs to be self-sustaining.
Well, we have, we've, the recycling commission has conversations with Paul and with the head of DPW every year about this, and because of, we try to, we look at it very closely, how, how close are we to actually the revenue we bring in, pay for the, all the costs associated with it. And the recycling commission says that every year, that maybe we don't have to meet it exactly, because we're serving, you know, every time the schools bring stuff down, they're not, they're not charged. If the park department brings down limbs or trees or whatever, they're not charged. So that's all, that's all absorbed by this, by these fees. So, it's, again, I totally respect your observation about the ten versus the fifteen. I wouldn't go to bat for the fifteen over the ten. But I think the others are very fair, very fair and reasonable, and the biggest, the biggest hit is in the bulk, bulky fees and construction fees. When people have, when their contractor comes to their house and they do have a lot of that kind of material, they tend to bring it on behalf of the contractor, but the resident brings it down there, and that's, those are expensive. And I think this is a fair adjustment, which is the biggest adjustment. And then the sticker fee, we haven't raised the sticker fee. I just went back and looked at something from two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. It's been the same for many, many, many years, so. I think it's very fair and reasonable.
Okay, Marie, you have.
Mark, he's going to pick this up.
And there's a wonderful, I just discovered, that if you are getting demolition or something in your house, and you have a lot, and you, someone has a truck, you just take your sticker information, you go and they give you a.
One-day pass.
One-day pass.
For a different vehicle.
For a different vehicle, so.
But nothing larger than a truck?
No, it was a, that was not larger than a truck. So, instead of getting this other one, you can always just do one-day pass for once a year. And it was, it's very, very convenient.
I no longer have my truck, in case you're wondering.
Yeah, I feel like trucks are very popular.
Is there any concern about landscaper, landscapers using the system for non-Long Meadow resident yard waste?
We ask, we ask as part of the deal with landscapers, that they provide a list of their Long Meadow customers to the clerk when they get their pass. They have to get a pass every time they come in, a landscaper. And we think it's, if it's, if it's charged correctly, our fees are covered in that, even in that scenario.
Well, I guess the other thing that's nice is that, you know, people who do make some additions or fix their home up and, and they use, have to use a dump, they have that access to get rid of their refuse.
It's not, excuse me, the recycling centers.
But then what happens is, you know, it increases the home values, and it helps the town tax rates, and so it's a positive thing, so.
It's.
I don't know, Richard, please.
I've been waiting.
Uh-oh.
I'll have the same comments I had last time. I can't tell you what it costs to run the center. There's no information available. And that we're being asked to set rates for the operation of the center. And that's, that's my opposition. It's not the center, it's not the people, it's that we've been given rates now. I look at the rates, you know, the five dollars, five dollars up on the stickers. We sell, we sell about three thousand stickers a year. That's fifteen grand right there, just for stickers alone.
Additional.
Yeah, additional.
That's correct.
Our senior stickers are going to go up by forty percent, because the twenty-five dollar mail-in is no longer available, and they're going from twenty-five to thirty-five. We can have generally fifteen, sixteen percent increases. Landscapers look like theirs goes up about eleven percent. We had a reduction in service apparently in our trash contract this year, where we were able to put tires out. Now we can't do it, so we reduce services on the town side and increase the cost to get rid of tires down there. And I guess that was kind of a quiet thing that slipped in. I don't think it was publicized. No, not negative, but I didn't know it.
No, no, that's, I agree with you.
Yeah, I didn't know it. And I got to think if anybody should know it, select board members sitting here should know it.
You're right.
Bulk items in a truck and a van went up sixty percent. These are pretty sizable increases without a budget that you make a determination on.
We'd be happy to provide you with.
Well, we made, it's not, not you, Arlene, because we, I made the same statement two weeks ago. Bulk items in a large, I don't know what a large truck load is. I don't know what a large, I don't know how I define a large truck load, but that went up fifty percent. And then we got all these other ones that, and I agree, you got the guys down there like you got a problem with the quarter loads, half loads, three-quarter loads. I've been down there too, so I, it's a, they wave their magic wand and tell me how much I owe. And that's what takes place. But that is my only opposition, that we've been asked as a board to approve rates, and that we're really not basing it on anything that we can factually see.
Well, let me just assure you that there are facts behind this, and the facts are to the best of our analysis or recycling commission with DPW, that our costs exceed the money we're bringing in, so that's why we're doing this, yes.
Richard, very quickly, the select board does set a budget every year for the recycling center. So you, maybe you don't have it in front of you right now, but we do set that budget annually. And for FY eighteen, I mean, I have the budget numbers in front of me. Basically, for salaries, you're paying about a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars for the operations for the salaries.
But what's our revenue?
About a hundred and thirty.
Okay.
Well, in total, from all the sources, about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
But these are the facts I would hope we would have seen out in front, so we could have looked at it prior to this vote.
Yeah, and your point is.
It's a very small point, and I'm not going to belabor it anymore, I'm just saying, I'm going to unfortunately vote against this, because I can't support this coming in, especially since we brought the thing up two weeks ago. I would have thought we would have seen something.
I'm sorry, I was never told that issue. I would have had that for you, I'm sorry.
At the same time, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't.
But that number you just gave, that revenue to the, if it's the solid waste enterprise fund, that is not revenue from the recycling center, the two hundred and sixty thousand.
No, it's also from the MRF.
Well, no, but that's not what we use as an analysis for this, and they need to understand that. When we're talking about this service center.
Apparently, it's only me that needs to understand.
Well, I don't know. Maybe somebody else cares about it too.
We're listening.
When we're talking about this service center, we're talking about the recycling center, what our costs are for that, and what the rev, what our costs are generally for that piece of land, and how much revenue we get for that service. That does not include anything curbside, and it doesn't include the revenue from the MRF, or the revenue from the bags for the, for the, the solid waste program. So it's just the revenue for a couch or for the, and we don't charge anything. Part of this is, it's, what's invisible here is what all the yard waste that comes in from the residents, and lots and lots of yard waste comes in from the residents, that we have to take care of and bring to another location and pay per cubic yard for that to go. You know, we've talked about a special fee for that. We, I can only imagine the lines backed up and backed up outside waiting to look at every piece of yard waste that's coming in. So, we've made a blended, sort of a blended rate. I think you're, I love that you care about that. And you're going to say, I'll give it to you personally, because I want you to understand. You can vote against it, that's fine.
I just think it's.
That's fine.
You know, when I looked at the rate, I'd like to see the justification for the rates. I mean, they may be there, but I know, I've heard this board go through these long discussions on items likely smaller than this, and I'm surprised everybody's, there's no concern. And I'm the only one that's concerned. I, I see I'm the only one that seems to have voiced a lot of concern.
Rich, can I ask a clarifying question? The revenue side is relatively easy to project. You want to look at the expenses side?
I want to see both.
Right, but how, I mean, a couch comes in, somebody pays twenty-five dollars, goes in the dumpster. We don't pay somebody to come pick up the couch. It's supposed to go in the dumpster. I mean, you're looking for.
We pay seventy-two fifty for a ton, for that thing that goes out. We know how many tons we bring out, so we, and we look at that.
Right, but to do it, to compare twenty-five dollars for the couch, to take it in versus take, send it out, it's apples and oranges a little bit, because it gets aggregated with a bunch of other stuff.
Well, not exactly. The couch does, but the mattresses, we know now we're paying per mattress, so that's, those are real numbers.
But the bulky waste gets aggregated, so it's, it's tough. I just want, do you want that level of comparison, is what I'm asking?
I was just, I was just after something that I could look at in the quiet of my home, getting ready for the meeting, and say, yes, everything here is justified, and we'd had an opportunity to talk about this recycling program online and let everybody out there in the, in the land know that these rates are fair.
Absolutely, you have every right to that. I agree completely.
Because I, my fear was, when a rate goes up by sixty percent, without a real good explanation, that it promotes people to make alternative plans for getting rid of it.
Well, our disposal rate, you know, went from sixty-three dollars a ton to seventy-two fifty a ton between, since July first. So, right there, that affects a lot of the activity.
You know my concerns genuine.
No, no, absolutely. I'm not, I'm not uncomfortable with your question at all. I wish I, if I had been told that two weeks ago, you would have had that information. There's no question about it. But here's the thing, we need to, the stickers go from January first to January first, and so we really need to be, people are waiting to buy their stickers. So, I appreciate that, but we are kind of under a time crunch, because they want to buy their stickers.
And the, so the, because you always ask the question, you know, why now? You know, why not two years ago, five years ago? And so, really, the increase of the bulk fees is a big driver.
And to be very honest, every year when we look at this, again, I'm looking at, we're looking at what the operation costs are and what our revenue just for the center is. And every year, our operation costs, things are added on to our operation cost. Like, we never before were paying the benefits of the employees. Now we're paying benefits.
Clarify that. You are not paying benefits, but in the calculation that I give you about all the indirect costs, I give you those numbers.
Well, you don't go give them to me. The head of DPW says, says, this is part, you're responsible for a certain amount of my salary, you're responsible for a certain amount of the clerk's salary, you're responsible for, so all of those things come into the hour, hour analysis when we're looking at it, and which is what I would give to you.
Right.
You can say we don't have to count it, but then you have to tell the DPW director, not me.
No, again, they're in the calculation, but within the, within the solid waste recycling enterprise fund, there is no charge for any type of benefits.
I only know is, the salary that I'm told we're responsible for includes benefits of the chief attendant.
Again, it probably includes some. Again, it probably includes something for the administration of the town clerk's office also, because that's also where they saw the stickers.
Okay.
And, but the bulk waste fee, you said from 50 to 70, and that's...
Well, that went from $63 to 72 to 50.
Okay, so...
Because of the change in the disposal situation in the valley.
That's a big jump.
Yes.
Is it, what's the percentage, Paul, probably, the 12, is that almost 20%?
Uh, yeah, it's about 20%, a little less.
Yeah, which is, you know, it's a big jump, and that's our biggest, I mean...
That's a big, that's a big, it's a big expense.
That's the biggest expense we have taken.
No, biggest expense is salaries.
Oh, the salary, of course.
No question about it.
Other salary, yeah.
You say it's, no, I'm not, I'm not gonna say anymore. I know it's a big expense, but wouldn't it be nice if you knew how much the expense was, so we could, revenue and statements and, and outlays, and that's the comparison that you should make, not something went up 20%, that doesn't mean anything in my world unless I find out how much I've used that 20% increase versus the revenue that I'm charging coming in, that's, that's the only thing I was saying. And I, I won't say anymore.
Okay, and Marie?
I move to approve the rates recommended by the recycle commission and DPW.
Second.
Seconded, okay, any further discussion on it? Okay, all those in favor? All opposed?
Thank you.
All right, it passed.
Thanks for your time.
Yeah, thanks for...
Okay, so now we move to our next agenda item, which would be new business, we've already accepted the audit, so we move to the liquor license change of manager approval for Bertucci's Restaurant. We've all received that package, or that information on the change. The only thing, it looks like there was, you had checkmarks, the only checkmark wasn't this proof of citizenship, was that?
Right, there's a memo in your packet too.
Yeah.
They did not submit it, and then back and forth with emails, they gave them the deadline, still did not submit.
And so we still don't know, we just, it's the standard proof of citizenship, where they have to show their...
It's on the, where you're looking at the checkmarks, passports, there's certain things.
I'm sorry, they have to prove citizenship or legal status?
Citizenship.
You actually have to be a citizen?
I think so.
Proposed manager.
Well, she checked, she checked it, yeah.
Well, passport or certificate, and make sure that they're a legal citizen.
No, it's not so much citizenship, it's that these are the documents required.
Yeah, passport.
Passport, US proof, yeah, I guess it all, yeah, voter registration, you have to be a citizen.
You have to be a citizen to manage a restaurant that sells liquor?
Proposed manager of record.
Well, we don't...
Oh, okay, that's, I'm sorry, that's fascinating.
What is your profession?
Immigration attorney, you could work as a, defend subcontractor and not be a U.S. citizen, but you can't sell liquor.
You can sell liquor.
There you go.
So we can't loop on this? Okay.
No, and they're not here, so we obviously figured it out, so, still waiting for that.
All right, so then I guess we...
Table it, or what are more due?
Without all the information submitted, we really can't do much with this until everything's turned in, right? Is there, do we just look for consensus from the board, is there, I guess?
Well, they're not even here.
They're not here, yeah, so, okay, so we will just close that and move on to our next order, which is the, we did the change of hours, so we are all the way through to...
Proven minutes.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
To our subcommittee reports, anything?
Yeah.
No? Okay, so we have a, a motion for adjournment, which we would move into executive session, not to return.
No, to return to open session.
To return to open session, okay. Do I have a motion for that?
Some of it.
Okay, second, all right.
No, it's gotta be more specific with the, with the purpose.
All right.
Okay, for the purpose, yeah, the developer agreement?
For the purposes of discussing negotiations for the Dwight Wood developer agreement, and if appropriate, a vote.
And you added to the executive session and...
Citizen complaint.
A citizen complaint.
Yeah, okay, so that would be the motion, with those three things.
What was that, citizen complaint in the same motion?
For the motion, yeah, it was the negotiation, developer, approved the minutes and the citizen complaint, the three issues we're gonna be discussing.
Agreement and citizen.
Yeah, you have to add something like the discussion of which would be harmful to